Welcome to the March twelve, two thousand twenty-five. Like a work session for the Morrissey drivers. So first say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, excuse me for packing system because you know the time of year. I said that. And Eric and I were talking in the afternoon. And he brought the point that this is kind of our one big full work session. To deal with what's gotta be done and we'll still have some work to do on the next one. We'll have to wrap it up then advertise directly.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, next week. Yeah, I mean, we will be advertising the max budget and max tax rates associated with that budget. So. You know, tonight's kind of the big night to kind of go through and make any change. Down from there, but can't go back up once we're out, once we finish. You know, for next week and again, we only have about forty-five minutes of a work session time before next meeting. So. Not a lot of time. So really tonight's the night. So.
What's that?
Bring coffee too.
Yeah, we can.
So. You wanna, you have anywhere you wanna start or does anyone want to start their own items?
Well, yeah, I mean, unless the board has some, some things they wanna go through. I figure maybe just kind of go with a few changes since last time.
We've got some revenue updates. Tony. By the way. He's not gonna be here at all, but he is gonna.
Alright, so just a few changes, not much since last time. So we did receive. Updated values from the commissioner. Unfortunately, it did not produce what we were hoping it would produce like it normally has in the past. Literally. In the grand scheme of things, I think it produced maybe about fifteen thousand dollars of additional revenue. Some combination of real estate, personal property. And then, and again, you know, probably from here and by the time the budget adoption comes, there may be some little bit here and there, but nothing significant. We did up, uh, update slide down a little bit. We did update local sales tax estimate. We got a document from the state. They normally send something out that gives our localities their estimates. The amount that I had budgeted. Was was a little short of what they're estimating for sales tax revenue. So we ended up increasing that by about fifty-nine thousand. And then just a few other changes I'll go through since the last time. Uh, the clerk of the circuit court, she got notification that one of her grants that she submitted for was gonna be forty-five thousand dollars less. So we reduced revenue up top, but there's also a reduction in forty-five thousand in expenses down below. So that's kind of a wash. And then let's go, let's, let's kind of go down with some of the expense changes. Keep on going, keep on going. So yeah, there's the forty-five thousand for the grant. Keep on going. Right. Let's hear a couple of things we put in, you know. This was not in Mr. Schmeck's budget for economic development, but I know you all received the presentation about gateway signs and the costs associated with that. So you could either include it as part of the budget, or if you wanted to fund it out of, you know, BOS contingency or something like that, you could do that too at a later point. So again, we just put that there as a, as a something to, as a discussion point. Go down, we haven't not changed anything with the schools at all. And then just, just one item, there is. For, for the VRA loan, for the Palmyra sewer system, there's a rate covenant that says we have to, we have to have. One point one five percent coverage for debt service. And because of the expenses and the revenues haven't been meeting where they need to be, we need to increase the budget by about nine grand to be able to make that rate covenant. It's, it's really strictly almost administrative. It's not necessarily that we're spending the money. They just need to show that we have. Revenue that we're bringing in revenue and if that's from general fund revenue as, as the offset, then, then we have to show that. But that's nine grand. And let's go back up top. I'll always talk about some things that have come out from the, go down just a little bit. Just one little bit more right there. Okay. So a couple of things out from the comp board. So the comp board. Approve, as we talked about before, a three percent cola for, for state supported positions. So constitutional officers, social services and what have you. In addition to a memo that came up from the board recently, addition to the three percent, there is a one and a half percent bonus in there as well. So there'll be some discussions from the board. I know I've had some discussions with, with sheriff about this. But again, so. If, if the county wanted to give, and again, Emma's putting the number on there. So remember, I've got. I've got three percent coal already, already into my budget proposal for all county staff. And then I had some additional money in there from, for some compensation increases. If the board wanted to change to do the bonus. That is basically the cost to do the entire bonus would be two hundred and twenty-six thousand. And then there's the offset of forty thousand, three twenty-six in, in basically state revenue. And there may be a little additional too from social services. I wouldn't, I wouldn't bank probably any more than maybe. Eighteen thousand or so, as I'm just trying to look at some, some estimates that you could add to the additional revenue. But so again, that's, that's one thing to discuss. Also in the comp board memo, there was language in there that says. That there is a six percent increase for dispatchers. As part of that, currently right now, the county has five comp board funded dispatchers. I think we have about sixteen dispatchers, eighteen. Yes.
They're gonna be busy people if we only have five.
The one thing, the one thing that the language is, did say it is, it is. Unlike the three percent, the three percent says if you want to get the three percent funding, you have to pay the three percent. The language for the six percent says. You can get the six percent. The county could get the six percent because we already fund far more than the comp board. Pays for, for the dispatchers. So that's, there's one component of that.
So, so the. The six percent would not mean the county spending any more money because it's a pay.
I mean, right now, because the county pays dispatchers more than what the comp board funds. I mean, the county could just recruit that money. Now, if we, if we didn't, if we didn't fund dispatch positions. Right now, the comp board funds. Dispatch positions probably about on average of about thirty-three thousand per position and we pay, we pay about thirty-three thousand per position. I think, I think we probably pay. At least twenty-five percent above what the comp board funds.
For all eighteen?
Or just.
Well, remember, we only get funding for five positions.
Right, but is that spread out over? Or is that only solely go to five?
The comp we're funding would only go to five. So again, all we would receive for, for the six percent increase for the, you know, we'll say all, I mean, but I mean, it's, you know, every little bit helps is, is ninety-nine hundred dollars and change.
Of the whatever.
Well, no, you don't. We can add that right in there because that's, since the county is already paying above, unless the board wants to give a six percent in addition increase. But the language, the language from the comp board does not require. The county can offset that.
So we're just not like that's six percent is only is set aside for the five people.
It is, it is.
But we're above that already.
What he's saying.
We can absorb it. Yeah.
I mean, if, if we were paying, if we were paying a dispatcher is exactly what the company was, but the only way we get that six percent is if we paid the six percent. But those, those are really the only changes that have come about since then. I mean, you know, we already talked about health insurance. Go back to the presentation. Let me just kind of show you health insurance really quick too. Because the board, yeah, go back to the presentation or whatever. Oh, yeah. Yep, click there. Yep. Click on the link for health insurance. So as, as I told the board before, you know, the county received our actual health insurance increase and it's a six point four percent. The one thing that the board does have to do is. We have to, Ms. Snow, we have to send into Anthem or the local choice what, what the contribution schedule is gonna be by probably next meeting, correct? Because they need to know by the end of this count, end of the month. So, you know, as of right now, in the budget, again. We were originally projecting this ten percent increase, you know, I, I had the county paying nine out of a ten percent increase and then the actual increase came in at six point four percent. So right now, what I have is this chart show here where it says current anthem is what, what the current premium is. And then what the county pays and then what the employee pays. And this column is showing what the new premium is gonna be. What the county would pay to keep the employees whole and then obviously. If you're keeping employees whole, they're paying the same amount. And then if you see that. Kind of where it says premium increase on the end. So per plan or per different plan, that is. That is what the premium, the monthly premium increases for the different plans and stuff like that. And then if you see right there. We've got the, the numbers for how many employees are in what particular plan, you know, like HDHP preventative, one thousand preventative, five hundred preventative. You know, like I said, these are. These are single plans right here, or you go down to dual, which is two people or then family plans and what have you. So those are just the different, the different amounts. I mean, so, so right now I've got in the budget. For the county to, to cover the full amount because we reduced the nine percent down to six point four percent. So I guess one thing we would need to know is, is, is that. Because we had to have a motion for the board for next week. And so is, is there any changes? In that or is the board intending to, to, to pay the premium increase to cover the premium?
Here's my question. What is the amount that you have left over? You said you had nine percent budgeted. So we got two point six.
It was, we, we already, we already took out eighty-one thousand out of the budget. So that's already been accounted for.
You've already reflected.
Yeah, yeah. If you go back to the budget balance sheet, Teresa, no, put it on the Excel document. Uh, yeah, it, health insurance reduction from nine to six point four. So I already, we already backed out the eighty-one thousand. That would. That's that difference between the six point four and the nine.
And what's, what's a percent? That's how much?
What's that? It was, every percent was thirty-one thousand, four sixty-two, I think.
Say it again.
Thirty-one thousand, four sixty-two.
Well, I've always said. We don't pay the most and we can keep them harmless. I think it's a benefit to our employees. And we didn't. We didn't last year.
So again, I mean, so if the board, I mean, if the board wants to see something else, we would just have to put that together and bring it to the board next week. So is there, is there anything different or?
Do you remember, what was the total? Health insurance increase last year? Percentage wise?
Oh, it was.
We covered eight. I think it was eleven.
Tori, go into the, go into my, go into the coad for fiscal year twenty-six, the summary document. There's a chart in there that shows the increases. If you can just go and look and see what, what, what it showed.
I can't get to go in.
Then if you go to FY twenty-six budget folder and go to the. Budget book. Maybe like the third or fourth page in there has the health insurance premium increase history.
I'm good with the rough number.
I believe it was eleven and you guys.
Should be a chart. Just keep on going down. Right there.
Eleven percent.
So anything, anything different is. Except staff just needs to know if, if we need to prepare something or if we're moving forward with the county covering the increase or whatever else we need to do by next meeting.
Historically. When it's, when it's in that six to six and a half range, the board. Can you remember this board not covering?
I don't think so. I, I would say probably on the lower range and you know, we haven't had a six. A six percent while you saw that, you saw that up.
And twenty-four, it was four point three, twenty-three was nine, twenty-two was eight point four.
Say it again.
Twenty-two is eight point four, twenty-three was nine, twenty-four was four point three, twenty-five was eleven.
Yeah. And how much did we cover? Did we make the employees cover any of it?
So for the current budget year, yeah, that I mean, there was. The board had.
What about in those years?
I would have to go back and look. I don't have the exact amount. If there was, I can, I remember at least one or two of the years, I know the board covered it. There was maybe one year where maybe the board said we are going to cover the same percent that we covered last year. And, but, but I think that's been, yeah. I, I don't have the exact one, but, but over the past three or so years, there's been some combination of. Either the, I'm telling you, the lower years, the board uncovered it, or maybe on the years that had a higher percentage. Maybe there was like a year where. The county paid some percentage of, of the increase as well as the employee.
So last year was what seventy, seventy-two point seven, I think, because if you do the math, eight, eight out of eleven.
And so last year, there was definitely, you know, definitely the, there was a bigger increase. Now the board also added an additional one percent. Cola that started January one, that I think it kind of offset some of those increases in this budget, but.
And you have anything else here? I'm good to leave where it is.
So we'll bring something forward to the board just with, with what the contributions are showing here for the next meeting. So you can go and. Just close that out. And then, so I mean, I guess go into the budget, you know, a couple of things last time. I mean, so we put in funding for the schools. We put some additional positions in there for the sheriff's office and for DSS. You know, the one thing that we didn't do last time, when we think about it, and this doesn't really affect the tax rate, but if we're gonna fund all five sheriff's positions. We need to add. Because again, I had one sheriff's position and then the board put in an additional five positions. We have to add in additional five vehicles if, if the board is planning on covering all six positions.
We did put those positions.
You know, you did.
No, we didn't put the position. What Eric's just saying is if you hire a deputy, you have to give him a car.
Benefits to add.
Yes. Yeah, there was, the board put six hundred and thirty-six thousand in there for. Adding the deputies, the, the five deputy position and the equipment associated.
So we're, are the schools fully funded and what's there now?
No, the schools are not fully.
They're not in there. Are they in?
Yeah, so go down the schools. Right now, the, the county has to cover. So the school requested. One, one, basically one point, yeah, one point eight nine and the county has seven hundred and sixty-one thousand in for the schools.
And that's balanced.
Sixty-one thousand unbalanced, but yeah, we have.
Is that above or that's above?
That's above. Yeah, that's additional revenue.
But that's at seventy-five cents?
That's a seventy-five cents.
Say that again, Eric. Sorry. You, when you say above, you mean, so we have sixty.
You have sixty-one thousand that you could either. Fund something different or reduce, reduce the tax rate by, you know, by some fractional, fraction of sixty-one thousand.
My thought process there is guys. I don't think we got enough on the school side. Uh, we've got. We only have one point two million dollars. We keep the seventy-two cent that Mr. Doll. Brought to us. We got to find one point two million dollars, I believe. My math was correct. Two and a half cent because it was gonna be seventy-seven point five to equalize it. And now we just have to decide and that's the one thing I was afraid of. We're gonna have to decide what's. One, do we fund? I mean, right now we're less than half of what the schools have asked. And, and what is it for them to get? Trying to get some clarification on this. I don't know, maybe Dan, Eric, the three percent, I know it's not. That they would get from the state. I know it's not clear and cut as like a, like a grant match or something like that for all intents and purposes, but. Do you have any insight you can share on how, I mean, there, so for them to get three percent, it's like, what, a million?
Yeah, I mean, I think for the schools to give, again, like the county for the schools to give three, like three percent across the board. It would cost a million dollars.
Little bit.
Yeah, a little above a million dollars for.
And is that in addition to state funds or?
Yes, yes, yes.
Because there's non-state funded. When the state does this. Okay. Usually we end up covering about sixty percent, at least maybe sixty-one or sixty-two percent and they'll end up covering thirty-eight. They say that they are, we're giving a three percent raise, but we have to come up with. Sixty plus percent of that. No, I can't give you an exact figure. That's pretty close. So that's the, that's the thing right there. And you know, I hate not to give six deputies. I hate not to do the social services. Additional people, but we gotta, we gotta find one point two million, or one point two million dollars for mass. Yeah, no, I don't, I don't disagree. I, I think. You know. Uh, the, the one million would be. I, I, I'd be. You know, it'd be tough to send something back where, where they, they don't get the raises that they're looking for. I mean, do they, do they, is there a caller? And they talked a little bit about this last week. There was something that you either chose. A cola or a step increase in the salary. Is this, is this effectively a collar that we're looking at?
From what I understand, and I spoke to Dr. Gretz about this, generally it's the greater of the cola or the step.
And this will be effectively a collar, correct?
Well, I mean, so. So the three percent, so let's just say that. And again, Mr. Sheridan, we probably talked more, more about this, but let's just say that someone was eligible for a step. Because it's like maybe meet one of those prime times. So let's just say, and again, I, I don't know the steps. Let's just say.
They've done away with those now. It used to be at year fifteen. You got like an eight thousand dollar, seven thousand dollar jump. That was their kicker to get you to stay. Is if you got to year ten, you could look out there and say, well, if I make it to year fifteen, I know I'm gonna get a seven thousand dollar raise. Now that they're staggered equally. So I think the percent column goes on to the steps that already exist. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Once you get to thirty-five, you no longer get steps. Step and the cola essentially. Yeah, I mean, it's the, the step and you had the cola just because the steps grow up. And that don't hold me to it. I might be wrong.
But I, I spoke to Dr. Gratz about that. He said it, it's, it's someone would get the, whatever is greater, whether the cola or the step was greater, but you don't give both. That's what he said to me.
Okay, so that may be it because I know that mine was three percent.
Yeah. So, so if the three percent was two thousand dollars, but, but doing the step was three thousand. They're gonna take the three thousand because it's greater than, than whatever, you know, the, the, the three percent cola. So that's, that's what was related to me.
Our steps, I think the largest steps that are in the teachers. Salaries are twelve hundred bucks.
Okay.
In a year. For a hundred dollars.
Yeah, it was, I, I, I don't, I had no idea what the steps are, but yeah.
There's what, thirty of them? Thirty-five. Now, when you get past thirty, they go from twelve hundred dollars to four. Now, and, and continuing to try to work through that piece, if we don't fully fund, let's say we don't give the schools enough. Right now, they don't even have enough to cover that, that three percent light item. Okay. So if we were not to do that, what would be, would there be an offset in state funds? Meaning would they get less state funds?
Well, yeah.
They would have to sit back, this, this is, yeah, and Mr. Doll, you may know more about it. But they would have to sit back as a school board and the superintendent and decide where they want to spend their money. Is there somewhere they can rob Peter to pay Paul? Or that, to meet that.
Or, or no, I, I don't know this for sure. I'm just, I'm just kind of thinking out loud. I don't know if, say they. I don't know if, let, let's just say hypothetically, they said, you know what, we don't, we don't have all the revenue, so we're just gonna do a two percent increase. And.
The state would only give a two percent.
They would only fund you, they would only give you reimbursed.
For the positions.
And it's the same thing like the county. I mean, again, we've got state supported positions, but it's very, you know, again, for the constitutional officers and DSS. And you know, overall, they don't fund the full, they don't full, fund the full salary amount and they don't fund all the positions and all the offices. It's always, it's.
So the state's given up to a three percent. Correct. For those positions, for those positions. One thing I will add is you were talking about the bonuses. The bonuses to me are a one-time thing. That will not come, we should not put that in the budget. That's something we should pay from fund balance, in my opinion, because it's not a repetitive thing. For what? You know, the state's talking about. You're better at that than I am.
Well, I mean, still like I said, I think the state is what they're doing is I think they're doing the cola plus the bonus because in the, the current budget year from the state budget, I think they're seeing some one-time revenue surpluses. And instead of giving it into higher than a cola. I, I believe they're doing the bonus because it's, it's a one-time thing. It's not the gift that keeps on giving. It doesn't continually add out.
Here's the other thing that they're, they've. Been made very ultra aware of. In the region, we're the lowest paid state. Here. West Virginia, Maryland, I mean, Maryland by far outpaces, North Carolina, any state around us outpaces. So they're trying to make corrections, but they're not being. They're not jumping very high. Let's just put it that way because I imagine everybody's doing a toll.
The, the one thing I would bet you and I, you can ask, like I said, I think Sheriff and I had this conversation about cola too. You know. I, I would, I would. I would argue that staff would probably rather have. A lesser cola than a one and a half percent bonus. If there was, if there was.
If we could choose.
If, if there was, if there was a choice.
The bonus doesn't benefit you on anything retirement wise. So that's what everybody would be looking at.
But, but again, I mean, so, so in, in, in the state's budget, again, they are, they are authorizing for a one and a half percent bonus. So. If the board were to do that, you know, we would just have to make some, we would have to make some compensation decisions. Because right now in my budget, I already have the three percent cola across the board and then I have money. Which, as we spoke about the last meeting after going through the pay rates, is some money to, to address some, some additional compensation.
Well, that's going back to my statement. I guess I should have made it better. If that ends up happening with the bonuses. That's something we can come back and just do out of fund balance. And that would be a match.
That would be a match, is what you're saying.
They don't give it to everybody. They. How many, how many deputies do you have, Sheriff?
Uh, dispatchers, what is it, seventeen?
So twenty-two of your, how many employees?
Uh, forty-two.
So we have to choose twenty-two to get the bonus or. We match the bonus with other.
Well, yeah, you you do one of two things, which which I think would not. I wouldn't recommend.
We don't wanna do.
I wouldn't recommend only to give bonus to only seventeen out of forty-two of the sheriff's deputies. I mean.
And and that bonus has to go to the to the people. So you you have deputies. You have deputies listed by name that are comp-funded.
Yes.
Positions. Okay.
You you get up there by being.
So you can't say if they're, if the state's giving you, let's say, let's call it a hundred dollars for. Or let's call it a thousand dollars simplicity purposes for those state-funded positions. You can't take that and distribute it out equally among everybody.
Nope.
It has to be.
It has to go into that person.
And so the the match you're talking about would essentially be to make it equitable across the.
Well, yeah, I mean, if, I mean, let's let's just say, I mean, because again, from from the three percent cola, I mean, would you want to do a one and a half percent bonus countywide? And then. That's, I mean, again, that's just, it's a discussion piece. Again, there's compensation in there for for additional increases, which I think. Probably long-term is is needed to to fix some, as we spoke about last time. There are gonna be some compression issues, a few of them that that we want to adjust. But like I said, you know, I I think we can certainly, you know, go through a lot of that this evening.
Well, that's my one thing, and I have, I do not wanna short you, but I don't wanna short the schools either. If we did three deputies, would that give us three hundred thousand to transfer back to the, or if we did four deputies? Four deputies would probably give us closer. If we did four new positions. Then that would get us close to being able to put a million dollars to the school.
Go go into the cell there, do we do?
I I didn't real, I thought we just put this in there last time to to see what the math did. I didn't know that we kept that in there as if we were gonna do.
It's just working points. I mean, yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, because because the board said, let's put, so we had all the deputies in there, and we said, let's put it at seventy-five, at seventy-five cents. And that was the amount that we advertised for the equalized tax rate. Now we need to advertise for the budget and 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 what is what is that full budget amount you want in there?
And so the leftover.
Are you getting the?
Yeah, it's a thank you. The leftover from the five deputies, I guess, is the seven sixty-one where we came up with the seven sixty-one.
So we added four hundred and twenty-two thousand plus a hundred ninety-one thousand. So I think those two combinations were the four twenty-two is probably gonna be the additional. Or the five additional deputies and the one ninety-one is the additional for all the equipment and, you know, uniforms and pistols and fuel and all that.
Yeah, but I'm talking about that's just the difference. What was left over was, I'm guessing, what you put down from the schools.
No, I think.
Seven sixty-one?
I know the board, the board, I think.
Well, I mean, is is there anything additional that we took out besides the deputies? Or added to the budget?
Social services employees.
So we added all.
Did we ever get clarification on that as to what the actual hit on the on the? On the budget was? Ms. Mayor, Ms. May.
It's the numbers that actually.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, so so she submitted, she submitted an email with kind of a clarification. So after kind of looking at the email, I I've got better, I've got better.
So can you explain that a little bit then, Eric, if you don't mind?
Yeah.
Those are the only three things we added money to, correct?
Yeah, the only big thing that you added money to last last time when you're setting the seventy-five cents was was all the sheriff's deputies, all of the, all the social services.
And then whatever was left was what.
Yes.
So just to clarify.
Yes, yeah.
The only increase for social services for those three positions, when you counteract everything, is am I looking at that two two thousand number there? Or what what's what's the number that's currently in?
Go, go.
It was forty-some thousand.
No, you gotta go down.
So I thought.
I think it was forty-six.
That's what I thought. Okay.
So, yeah.
Because there was some confusion. Mr. Roy was saying, wait a second, we can add three positions for only eleven thousand more dollars, but I don't. But it's act, when we're talking. Green and red plus the monies, it's forty-six. It's. Okay.
Because it was, they scheduled it out. If you got one of them, it was eleven thousand dollar gain for the county, and if you got two of them, it was three or four thousand.
So we're projecting additional state and federal revenues for next year, so. That's all the extra local funds that we need. The rest of it is being made up with state and federal funds.
Yeah, as far as the numbers on the board, it's that forty-six number we, so that was the the local match for the three numbers combined.
Yeah.
Where is that, Dustin?
It's right. Right there, so you see the one thirty-eight minus.
Got you, got you, got you, got you.
So if you back the one thirty-eight up, you gotta back.
And that's with two thousand. Yeah, bottom of that page. Yeah, that's the whole.
I got you. I mean, we could look at revenues, but I think revenue gets pretty wide.
We don't want to stretch too thin in the in the situation, the times that we're in right now.
Yeah.
I thought you was one of my point.
When have we advertised for the new pay rates for the new deputy positions that we?
Uh, sixty, sixty thousand, one forty-seven for a certified deputy and then fifty-eight and some.
When are, when are we advertising the, have we already advertised the increase?
It's already out there, it's already on a scale.
Have we noticed any increase in those five open positions that we have? Any increase in applications?
Not last week.
Okay, I wouldn't expect a week necessarily to make a huge difference there, but I noticed.
We had one recruiting event.
Yeah.
Where we were able to use those numbers to talk to people. Yeah, that was yesterday, so.
My only concern with, and and it sounds like you, I I probably would agree with you to take the, you know, number, I I would say six positions, um. Kind of offset that a little bit. I I wanna provide, you know, Sheriff's Department with some help, you know, we, I think last year we. Did it, did we add a position?
Did we add one last year, Major Sheriff?
No, no, y'all gave us, uh, we had, we asked for a figure, and we we settled, settled for additional monies, and we didn't give. Actually what we wanted. We said we'd come back this year and ask for that, and that's kind of what we did.
Um.
No new position last. I think I think some of the discussion last year, if I remember correctly, is is the, again, the pay rates were were adjusted last year in the charts, and I think. I think some of the more concern was, what what was that?
I think we did, didn't we adjust the pay twice?
Just once last year.
Just once.
Just one.
Twelve, one percent.
Yeah.
Um. And is that, is that six, what is the six hundred thousand number? Six, three, six, one of fives? That's basically just divided by six?
Go back up.
Or is or some of the? That's right. That's that's divided by five.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So four twenty-two, six ten, what's what's it divided by five?
Eighty-four, five, twenty-two.
Yeah, so eighty-four, five, twenty-two is like the amount per deputy and like health insurance and all that.
Yeah, but that doesn't include the vehicle and the.
Well, the vehicle, the one, the one nine one was equipment. So so do this for me, Tori, add those two together and then divide that by five.
Takes that six hundred thousand.
Because that final one's uniforms, isn't it, and a weapon?
Yes, correct. So that would give you the amount per com- complete amount per deputy.
Eighty-eight, eight, eighty-seven.
Say it again?
Eighty-eight, eight, eighty-seven.
Is that included?
Yeah, eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred eighty-seven. That doesn't include the vehicle. Equipment per deputy.
But why have we made over a hundred thousand dollars?
It's gotta be over a hundred thousand dollars.
Five is six hundred thousand.
No.
Because the.
Yeah, it's five and the six thirty-six, right?
No.
One twenty-two, eighty-five.
There's a twenty-one, eight, two, nine.
What what is it, Tori?
One twenty-two, eight fifty-five.
One twenty-two, eight fifty-five is the amount. Don't look at the twenty-one thousand, that was a fix. So it's not the full six thirty-six. It's those two numbers added together divided by five, and that's the amount per deputy.
Yeah, what's the six thirty-six?
That's the sum of all those numbers, but we added twenty-one thousand at the very beginning because there was a correction that needed to be made.
Yep.
So the twenty-one was correcting the first.
Was it that eighty-eight, eight, eighty-seven?
So six fifteen.
No, so the total for deputies, including equipment and everything, per every deputy is a hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight fifty-five.
Yeah, yeah, it had to be over a hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's that's. Salary, insurance, benefits, pistols, extra fuel, and so on and so forth. There you go. Yeah.
And the the equipment pays, the equipment can't be CIP if.
No, because it's just, it's it's small.
Okay.
I mean, now, now the vehicles, again, the one thing we didn't add last week, let's just say you want, said, we need to, we need to, we're gonna include these five deputies. We need to add, go back to the CIP and add five vehicles because we did not have five vehicles. Now, the five vehicles. The CIP dollars doesn't affect the tax rate that because it comes out of fund balance, so it's not going to, I mean, we need to do it from a budget standpoint, just so we have what the high-dollar budget budget amount is, but. Um, it doesn't affect the tax rate.
I I don't see, again, coming into it, I didn't. I didn't realize that we. Made that as a true bold change, and I don't see any way we can. Budget, uh, pay for six deputies.
Yeah, my my only, how long? Either one of you, how long has the five positions that that are currently open? How long have they been? I know it's probably not the same for each, but like, what's the shortest? What's the longest?
The shortest is, um, a week. Uh, last Thursday.
So we had a six now?
No, no. I knew that one was leaving.
Uh, okay, that had been counted, okay.
The longest was, it has been. Was in the summer of twenty-four. So, oh, nine months, just just for the sake of.
And the others, give or take five, six months, maybe, so.
Right, right in. All of that.
Okay.
It was a period a year before we were on three percent.
Yeah. Um. And.
Like I said, I've got five people and one, two people that one has accepted an offer, one will be getting an offer, and then I have three people in backgrounds right now.
Okay. And. Going through backgrounds because they've been offered a job or just because they're.
We do a background prior to, they've been through the interview, and they've had the minimum screening. We do the background first, then we, before we make a conditional offer, and waste some human resources, time, just all this time to give or make an offer and come up with a salary number and then.
Yeah.
Hat and run a, get them to sign the release, they run a criminal history, and they got arrested for something that they didn't tell us, and then you just wasted everybody's time. And believe it or not, people still apply to be deputies, they could have been arrested.
I've seen that happen before.
Um.
How many would? No, you asked for six. If you got three. Would that suffice? My, what a question. The honest answer is that six doesn't scratch the surface of what we need to cover, what we need to cover safely in this county. And I, I I don't say that lightly, and I don't say that, again, I said in my presentation, I don't say it'd be threatening or it can be scary or it can be anything else. Um, we worked through our budget. We we tried to find somewhere in the middle to start catching up. Um, with where we need to be, and then that's, that's why we planned it on six. It wasn't just a random. Well, let's ask for six and see if we can get it. You know, it was, it was, it was what we, you know, we're probably at twelve.
Or for the road, if we really wanna be.
One for courts and one for investigations, and that's, like you said, that's kind of to help balance things out. The the heaviest load is on the. On the road, the deputies, that's the biggest burnout, because they just don't stop. And then investigations is so. And then when all people were arrested, of course, the courts are are just, every week we're stealing somebody from somewhere else to go over to courts to work, which cuts wherever they came from. Short, whether it's the schools or or the road or investigations. Investigators have come over here and work for.
Have it forbid, we have to pull one of the SROs and then somebody, somebody get, somebody goes into that school.
Yeah.
Yeah, we.
And we had to pull them because we didn't have that yet.
And one one of those that you have, it's vacant right now.
So understanding that, you know, five down. But also at one point over the past year, as you said, you're full. And you have people on the hook, but then you lose some. If you had to. Guess over the year of twenty-four, your average of how many down? Uh, probably three. Even my, we we had. Some odd, it's a little tough because there were some oddities in there in terms of leave and people being out, so that we we had, you know, so it, we we were, we had been working significantly shorter, but not because of. Of vacancies. Uh, but but if if you're, we're trying to do it on an average.
Yeah.
Maybe three over the course of a twelve-month period.
Okay.
And just shut down. Maybe two.
We don't have any foreseeable retirements, uh, in the in the mix, but so several of the people we've lost or gone into the private sector for more money. And the last one just left more money at there. So that's that's kind of where we, you know, it's it's good, you know, you you win some, you lose some, kind of that. We, yeah, we're no different than everybody else. We're trying to stay ahead of the game.
Yeah.
If we gave you six, just out of curiosity. And realistically. What's the chances that all six are hired within three hundred sixty-five days of July one, when the budget's set? Because here's, here's, I'm gonna be, I wouldn't, if I could give every dime we possibly had to you guys, to give you every single thing you need, and I think every, probably every. Law enforcement agency and local law enforcement agency looks at a board like us and says we we could use more, and you, and and I think everyone would be completely honest about they 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 could use more. But realistically, you know, I I wish we could. Say, this is the easiest thing we've got, the easiest number we gotta look at, but it's not, and, you know, I I think. For me to understand what we would be willing to fund realistically. What my concern sitting on this side of the table is if we fund six. And three ultimately end up not getting hired because. It just, it just, and I get these things take a while, but because of some of the, you know, we've got five open positions now. You know, and so you've obviously, and I guess, okay, one of them was in the last week, and you got some people in the hopper, and. Um, you've described some challenges that once people are in the hopper, how they get out of the hopper. My concern would be funding six, and then we turn around and we're sitting here next year, and it's like, we funded this. Many positions against the tax rate that ultimately weren't hired. I know, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, it's just a realistic understanding, is I'm trying to make a decision and and.
Well, I think the three numbers, you know, give or take, you're always gonna be down one to three.
Yeah.
You know, and then like several times we've been a hundred percent, but that never lasts more than several months.
To be honest, some of that is an artificial vacancy, uh, just to put it out there, because. If I'm, if I have. A prospect that may be certified. Well, I only, but, or excuse me, a prospect that's not certified, well, I only, I have one spot, and I have somebody else that's right there that might, that I might be able to recruit in. So so I I could fill all those spots. I don't have any, I don't have any, but they're all, but likely all gonna be non-certified, not useful for a year plus.
You're talking about the the ones you have open now or the ones we'd be, the new ones we'd be creating?
I think what he's saying, if he if he hires deputies in training, so to speak, you just, they can't just be caught loose on the road.
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying, I I think there, we get some applications that would be hireable. Um, we have to, because we're limited on our number of positions, we we have to be extra judicious. With an offer to a non-certified person. Um. That likely could be made fairly quickly if we thought that there was room in our staffing to make that offer, because ultimately. If I have just a little bit of chance with another person, I may have, if I only have one spot. You know, I gotta go target that one person to try to draw in a certified person versus hiring in someone that I can send to the academy. And send, you know, five people to the academy in July or whatever it is, knowing that 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 gets me where I can put them out on the road in a year. And then those extra, I say extra, there's other positions that are vacant, that we're trying to fill constantly, um, will be, are are. It gives me a little bit of room to hire, to to target or to really recruit for a certified person to come in and fill that in.
So.
So, with these new positions, it sounds like it would be more of a building your bench type thing, where you'd be going after the non-certified folks that you could have more time to get.
Well, yeah, I, I think, and you meant, you said to use that analogy before, it, it's not, this isn't like. Well, if we had these positions, I can, I can just, you know, we'll have all these people in reserve.
That's not, yeah.
And I know, and we, and we had that conversation, and, and, but that's not the perspective, the, 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 the idea is, uh. If we're, we can build, we can, we can, we can use the time because we're not drowning. We can use the time to build um, staffing from a wider pool. Um, and it's not because we can pull them in and know they're not, we don't need those six, but we're gonna ask for them because we can, we, we don't have to worry about them being useful for a while. No, we're still fighting that battle. But we have to, but we can, we have a little bit more breathing room because. We can, we have a better chance of being able to hire a mix of people certified and non-certified, and not be completely underwater. Trying to get non-certified people trained up.
So. Uh, that makes complete sense, so circling that back around to. The, the reality of getting all six filled if all six were funded. Are you saying that by casting, or being able to cast a wider net, that the, the reality that you'd be able to fill those is probably more likely than if you had a smaller net, I guess, the, the reality of filling those within that timeframe?
Right, like you said earlier, while we have any background, you know, by the end of this budget, hopefully, we'll have those five positions filled.
And here's my.
I will say this, to, to your question, just to be, so we all completely open, and, and we've never been in a position.
Yeah.
To be able to, to project that. So, so we're, we're speaking quite speculatively that, you know, what that, of what that is, because we've. Um, since, I think the last time we had a, a group of positions that were, that were allotted to the sheriff's office at the same time. Was in two thousand and six, when I was hired, he, we, we got, I think, four positions all at one time. And, and so there were, you know, of course, completely different time, but we didn't, we, we didn't live through that. So, uh, and, and he was hired, kind of in the, the sheriff was hired at kind of the same time, so, um, so, but, but I, I do believe that. Um. You know, being able to, to cast a wider net, like you said, and, and take some chances uh, on getting some good. Some good quality people in here that we just have to dedicate the time to, because we're not drowning. Right now, when you're drowning, um, to dedicate a position to somebody who's, who's out there for a year or more. Without being able to help, you know, fully help, is a, it's a tough proposition for us, a super, a supervision hand for the road, uh, for the line of.
I'm sorry, no, wait, so are you saying that? What, what year did you say it came in?
Two thousand and six.
Two thousand and six. So are you saying that's the only time that you have gotten forward?
I believe that, I don't remember ever happening, since then, ever having a large. Increase, we, we have had staffing increases.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but to my recollection, it's been onesies, twosies through the years.
I see.
Yep, yeah. And the way the, the way the county's grown, um. It really, we're seeing that, the increase in the call that we have, the types of calls we have, and how long they take. Is, is where we're seeing the, uh, that, you know, what we talked about earlier, that people are getting, getting to the edge where. You know, you, you go the whole day long, and if you get time to go to lunch, you, you call that a victory.
Quick question.
Yeah.
How many deputies does Goochland have on the road?
But, do you know? Uh, last I spoke was, if he is fully a hundred percent staff, they would have ten deputies on the road on each shift.
On each shift?
Each shift.
We have three.
And we're three or four. Sometimes two.
Then if somebody's gotta drive some, somebody somewhere, but that, haven't they done something to alleviate that?
And that goes away on the sixteenth.
That goes away on the sixth, though, that goes away on the sixteenth, and then you gotta drive, you have to drive somebody to southwest Virginia, you gotta send two people.
You pick that back up on the sixteen.
You can tell Sheriff Creasy, he's got too many on Route Six at about five thirty-one.
Oh, no, they were all sitting there with the radar up when I drove through it with the driver's ed kit, done, done.
So Sheriff has, Major Hertz, oh, so. Do you know when the grant-funded positions will go away, like the funding for those S R O positions?
One goes out this year, and then we'll all be eligible for two.
Okay, so, so we have.
One more year, I believe, I believe we have one more year, unless they extend it. Okay, there's talk of going to five and six, it's like they did on the, this.
And I think, I think we're good, I, I think we get about one of them. I think it's just under two hundred K for funding for these positions.
Sixty thousand dollars per position. So next year, we should get about a hundred and twenty for the two.
Gotcha. And then, and then one other thing, so, so let's just say hypothetically, if you were funded the six positions, do you have it in your plan to request additional positions next year?
For school, the school grant has only been a continuation grant, there's no new, they're not.
You're talking about overall.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, and there, we, we, you know, every year, we have to sit back and think, how many, how many more? We're getting a hundred and forty-some apartments, we're getting a hundred, uh, all these, and I get, I get, and we've already been going there. To that new area, you know, so, uh, you know, and, and I think everywhere, there's kind of seems to be. But it's something we have to review every year and, and determine. Um, but I mean, I, I can see y'all are in a, you know, you're, y'all have to make it all work for everybody, you know, but we're here. To tell you what our needs are, we don't ask for something we don't need.
Correct.
By the way, to the, like the ride-alongs, this new thing coming about where you have to have two people in, I was trying to think, what do you call the, um. Volunteers.
Oh, reserves, yes.
They, can they help you all in that, can reserve, serve a second?
When they come in for their eight hours, they'll, they'll schedule that, and they'll come in, but they, they schedule when it, when they leave their job.
It's not like we call it and say, okay, we'll take off tomorrow.
We do ask, every, every time we have a known shortage, or a, a transport fall hour, or extra day, extra session of court, or. Um, the snowstorms, all of it, we, we sent out a blast, and, um, those, they, they have, you know, they're all working, working folks too, so. Sometimes they can fill in, but yes, they can fill in as a second on our transport.
Okay.
Um, and, and, and the, the, the two, the two officer rule is not, that's not a new, um. Protocol, that's a, that's a, that's been a safety protocol that, that we've had for quite a long time. What he's talking about being new is with mental health transports or temporary detention. Uh, the, the Commonwealth tried to, well, has implemented an alternative transportation, so. They use like al, with allied security for a while, where they will go to U V A, pick up the person, and drive them to wherever. Um, and they are re, they're, they're just constantly revamping that. They've got, they, they now know that provider is no longer the provider, no longer a provider for that. So, so now you have, um, um, we will have to step back in and take that back over. And the only two place, well, three places really that we go where we can only send, we only send one person is Central Virginia Regional Jail, Alamo. Charlesville Regional, and then Blue Ridge Detention, cuz they're right there to go.
Yeah.
But the fifteen minutes, that about fifty miles, it's, it's not a good, it's not safe to have a single deputy that might pick up two inmates at. Chesterfield or Enrico, or wherever, you know, and even drive them back and forth.
Gotcha.
Just, um.
All right. Please don't shoot me, Sheriff, please. But, I, I, I'm just sitting there like you talked about, we've got ourselves a. We've set a number that we've gotta get to, and we gotta figure out where we're gonna cut to get to. If you did four deputies, to me, that puts two forty-four back in the budget. If you did four of the deputies, it's one twenty-two apiece, right? Isn't that what you said?
Yeah.
Everything.
Yeah.
So if we put two back into the budget, that would put the schools at a million, with sixty-one, would put them pretty close to the three percent goal. But that covers nothing else for the school system. Where we gotta figure it out, fellas. And that's if we agree at seventy-five. Understanding what you were saying, and then I thought I heard you say, Eric. Um, you were thinking somewhere around. Three additional, or, or that you, that you potentially still average three down about the coming year. So, maybe. That'd be another three, that'd be three deputies instead of six. Then add, okay.
Let's just be.
I'm not, that would throw another hundred and twenty-two back into the pot if we only did three. But that's what we've gotta figure out.
Or, or, or when you're saying three, you're talking the three additional, because I think you're saying three total, cuz I included. It would be two more, yes.
Two additional.
Two additional above what I, what I, what I. I think is what they're saying. The struggle to, to. Bet on ourselves losing, just in that, in that mindset, that's, that's our, that's a. Well, that thing, you know, while we're, we're betting that we, that we will fail at our efforts to.
At, at all of our efforts, cuz we just did the same, the additional funding.
What are you saying, Major? No, I'm saying, I'm saying, if we say, well, we, well, we, 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 uh, expect that, that we're gonna have shortages for tension or whatever. So let's bet on having that. And cut in order to, in order, that, like that, to me, that's a, that, that's a struggle, that's a, that's a tough thing, um, tough way to look at that, I guess, is all it is.
From what he was saying?
Right, right, cuz we're, cuz what we're saying is, we're gonna bet on the fact that we're not gonna be able to recruit, um, well, and so that's, that's where our safety.
No, I see, okay, I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying, yeah. No, I, and I don't think that. Anything short of the, the total six would be any, any one of us, probably including Mr. O'Brien, certainly saying that there's any lack of. Thoughts on how well or, or much effort that would be put into recruitment, I think at this point, it's more of a monetary and looking at. This budget thing from a holistic perspective, conversation more so than it is your ability to recruit, or, you know, um. To want to provide, you know, everything that was asked there. Um, so, in order, um, were, were you suggesting three?
I, I wasn't necessarily suggesting, I'm just hearing the math, Mike mentioned to, um. You know, at, N F S, when we budget or forecast the, the next year, our, always our greatest hurdle's always been the. Uh, how many technicians we can fire, so we might say we wanna have so-and-so growth for the coming year. But we're gonna forecast that we can't get enough growth in, in technicians to support that, so we're. Kind of doing the same thing to the negative, if, if we, if we know we have all the other resources to go into X amount more revenue for the coming year. But we go, we can only hire three-quarters, just know from history, we're only gonna get three-quarters of that, we're just using real numbers. I would love to be able to hit a hundred percent of that, but we're using real numbers to forecast where we're gonna be. Here would be my question, if we were to say we're gonna do less deputies. If we got to January, and y'all were fully loaded, could we then come back and look and say, okay? Now, that would be robbing from next year's budget. But if they're full, if they're fully loaded, or when they got a hundred percent staffing. Come back to us, how much of a headache would that be, Mr. Doll, for us to add one?
Where would that money come from?
General fund for this year.
To fund it for this year.
But that would be robbing, whatever we put, would be robbing for next year's budget.
Yeah, the old thing you could, I mean, you, I mean, let's say, you know, hypothetically, you could use the.
Yeah, I mean, you could use. Spot where we gotta find money for somewhere.
It can be.
This is why I was.
Well, and I think you're.
Go ahead, Tim, sorry.
But that's, um, but from a financial and from an economic perspective, that's bad accounting.
They tell you not to do it.
Yeah.
Because you're pulling from next year's budget.
Program everything you're gonna do in your budget into your budget.
But we can.
Well.
We have a certain amount of money that we can deal with right now, unless we're gonna raise a tax somewhere else or change a tax.
Yeah, I think he's saying you can, in other words, what number we settle on is what the number's gonna be.
Yeah, that's fine, I, I'm just throwing out possibilities, cuz we're talking about, okay, well, they've had trouble filling this spot, you know. We, if we give them three, that'll be enough, cuz it'll take them forever. If they come back in October, and they have found six new deputies, or eight new deputies, if they would give them three, then, the five plus the three. If they have those, hey, I'm telling you, I sat down with one of them the other day, I'm not gonna call his name. But he was telling me and describing his data, and I went, oh, my dear Lord Jesus. Uh, you know, they were running with two people. And to cover a county this big, two people, yes, I agree.
Yeah.
We're between a rock and a hard spot, it ain't nothing easy.
And it never is. But this, this is why I asked the question, I can't remember if it's last meeting or the meeting before, I said, we know where we're at today. We know where we wanna be. What's our short, mid, and long-term plan to get there and do it in a controlled fashion? I mean, funding from general balance, well, why don't we just do this day by day? Just everyone get together and figure out what we're gonna do, cuz that's in effect what you're doing. You create a budget to create your plan for the year, and you should stick to that plan, barring unexpected things. Because otherwise, it's all out the window, we can appeal to the general fund to where our fund balance gets so low, we couldn't take a loan to save our life. Our credit rate falls to the floor. This is why you have to use sound accounting practices when you join your budget.
Thank you for explaining that, Mr. Doll, what was fund balance in two thousand and thirteen? Very low, wasn't it? Um, so I, I, I totally agree with you, I'm just, this is where we put ourselves. If we're going to do this, these are the only options we have to do it, is all I'm saying. I'm not fooling from our general fund to pay our bills. Now, to pay bonuses, yeah, cuz that's a one-time thing, that's just like a C I P debt.
But also, bonuses also incur you a long-term salary increase, well, no, not bonus, but.
That's what I'm talking about, if the state does the bonus thing, because they're gonna, they're not only doing it for the, our employees, they're also doing it for the schools. Okay, so they're gonna come back to us and say, hey, we're this much more. Cuz their number will be bigger than our number. Does it just have that many more employees? So, I'm, all I'm doing is throwing out suggestions, we've gotta figure out how we're gonna do this, what we're gonna do. And we have a limited number with what to do with it.
Yeah. Well, something like that could be a conversation we could have then if it happened.
Well, that, that's what I'm saying, and, and I'm not saying to sit here right now and say to do that, I'm just saying that the sheriff, if he were to fill all eight positions. And come back to us when they get filled and say, hey, guys, we've been lucky, we've got more great candidates in the work, and we can't hire them cuz we don't have the positions. We possibly, uh, do the three and then bake one in in January. Half, that would be sixty-one.
Off the, yeah.
It'd probably be a little bit less of a savings than that, because that would become half of the salary, not the equipment, kind of that nature, so it'd probably be like fifty thousand, let me say there. And that's just, yes.
And we're already.
Or thirty thousand.
We're shooting for the maximum ceiling that we set, which goes to what you said. Um, that, you know, historically, whatever you set your max tax rate, that tends to be the target you shoot for, um. If I wouldn't have known that's what we were gonna do, I probably wouldn't have set it at seventy-five. That's seventy-five cents would be an eight-point-seven percent increase.
You can cop wherever you want, I'm just telling you, this is the number we have, and you can cut, and you can pick the tax rate, any tax rate that you want, you can pick. And then it's our job to sit here and decide who we're gonna tell, we're not funding you. In order to do that, and that's what I've talked about in the past. We are the only county around that tries not to just say, we're gonna take that twenty percent increase in your taxes and put it in our pocket. I mean, I'm not trying to badmouth anybody else, they set a rate, that's what Mr. O'Brien's talking about, we haven't had that. Luxury.
Yeah. I'm glad.
Oh, I, I mean, if we did, cuz these have been conversations that we've had, that's.
Yeah.
That's why we have, you know, we talked with, heck, when it was ninety-two, and that's where we had to be as a tax rate, a dollar. And that was the suggestion that was made, let's pick a dollar and make that every. And that was the suggestion that was made. Let's pick a dollar and make that a tax rate and then we just leave it there. That was a suggestion. It got voted down.
People in Louisa are gonna see a true bump in their taxes this year.
Dude, uh uh, last year they saw a bump.
Yeah.
I mean, we have somebody sitting in this room. I ain't gonna call no names. It's a Louisa resident. They've seen a bump every year that the assumption go up.
Yeah.
Because it stays at seventy-ten. We tried to lower out. I wish I could tell people that their taxes are never gonna go up. And and they, we can make it to where they don't. But then we gotta sit here and say, okay, instead of adding three deputy positions, sorry, sir, we can cut three.
Well, we're not talking about cutting.
No, no, I'm just saying, if we're gonna go down to seventy-two cents, if let's say we decide we want to match Louisa's tax rate. We gotta find another one point three eight million dollars.
Oh, yeah, I get what you're saying. I don't think anybody sees. I mean, I think realistically, all we're looking at is actually increasing pretty much everything from where it was last year.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of how much we're going to increase it. We're not defunding anything. It's just a matter of how much down we're coming from a request.
I'm not saying that we're defunding anything, okay? I I'm not trying to say that. But it was just said that we picked seventy-five cent. Here we are trying to make it seventy-five cent.
I but I understand.
And that's fine. We could have picked any number.
I'm just clarifying because you said, here we are talking about cutting. We're actually, we're talking about. And we're cutting already things that were increasing. We're cutting asks, right? So we're, I mean, it's already. You know, this is, uh again, I want to make sure to clarify, just if listeners are out there that what we're looking at is not down from last year anywhere. Everything we're talking about right now is actually up from last year.
And I think my point was. I said, what, you know, what's the plan to do it long term? So if we roll, if we do something that's. Four or five percent, that's still above the rate of inflation. So we are increasing. And then next year, we could have meals tax, we could have a Wawa, we could have businesses in here. They'll generate tax revenue. To enable us to do some of the stuff we want to do without hitting the residential side of it.
But just for my own math and conversation. I mean, I'm not suggesting it should be, but if that's seventy-two, my math shows that that's still a. Four and a half percent increase.
Yeah, okay.
That's what I will not deny that. Never have said that. But we have neighbors that not just Louisa, Goodslay, Albemarle, all of them. They keep theirs at the exact same rate. They're looking at thirty percent increase. Twenty-five percent increase.
And I think I think the the.
Yet we're the only ones to get called. I'm sorry. We're the only ones that ever get told that we're doing a tax increase.
All right, I I've talked to more than one person in Louisa.
Now.
It's very clear that.
Now they understand that, but I've seen it in the newspapers and I've had people tell us Louisa never raised theirs.
Yeah, well, I think that when we talk about raising and lowering, and I've said this, kind of alluded to this in previous meetings, it's not gonna be the same for everybody. So this isn't one of those years where. You know, you're gonna go to church on Sunday and depending on what the rate is and what someone's assessment was, you could have lowered the guy to your left or you could have raised the guy to your right.
Absolutely.
And this isn't one of those cut and dry things. And I think that, you know, needs to, I think we all understand that, but I think it needs to be said that this isn't one of those cut and dry things this year. Where it's just, you know, last year, rates stayed the same. There was no assessment. We didn't raise taxes. That's easy to say last year. This year. Uh, it's, it's, it's easy to say, it's, it's very simple to say from one person to the next. What you exactly did, you know, and it's like, well, you know. Uh, if you go to the the the, take the average and get that equalized rate, I know people that in my area that have been in lowest twenty. So. If we were even at the equalized rate, I actually be lowering theirs, but there's some people down the street that are thirty-five, and if we were at the equalized rate, I'd be raising theirs. And they're not gonna want to hear anything about the equalized rate, you know? So I I think the the idea of just raising and lowering is is a. Binary conversation regarding taxation that can't necessarily be as black and white as it always is.
That's very true. I'm not laughing at you. You're exactly right.
Have gotten assessment letters and have seen numbers. And 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 they're they're concerned about that. And I think that that what we did a few weeks ago alleviated some of that concern and um, you know. I I think certainly we said, we said that we were going, we, you know, what we were doing was setting a tone, and I think that we really need to dig in deep here and figure out, you know. What we're what we're looking at. I mean, because I, you know, I would like to see us get closer to at least a number where the schools where the teachers are able to have that. And again, ultimately. How the school board decides to use whatever it is that we give them is up to the school board. Um, but, you know, um. I think I think we need to have some serious conversation. I mean, the sheriff mentioned something about. You know, and and Tim brought up a good point before I get to where, Tim brought up a good point about, you know, uh, doing some things this year, but that that we've started to see some some movement up up. Up your way in your district towards Louisa and and perhaps maybe next year, that time we have a meals uh meals tax. I'm not. I know that's coming up next Wednesday night, so um, but uh it it seems like that might be a likely thing that we'll have at that point next year. And then, you know, we'll have. Hopefully, um, you know, the Wawa there and and at least, um, you know.
The beginning.
And 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 a beginning to where, as Tim said, we can get to a point where we're starting to address some of these things. You know, without. Without putting more pressure on on the tax, the the homeowners. Um, so. I mean, the sheriff, the sheriff mentioned about about baking something in for January, uh, you know. I would, I would. I would certainly be interested in having a conversation about that. I'd. Probably be more towards towards two, seeing if if we fill what's open and and if and if you have, then if you're filling up those two and then having something there in January to where if you're there and you say, look, we filled this, it's there for you. And then. By next time budget season, you do have your three. Right? And they're there. It may not be as much as you wanted at the time, but I mean, I certainly, you know, that's something that it's a good point. It's one less than you suggested on the top end. But. It's also. One and a half more next year than 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 what was originally proposed. Um. I don't know if anybody wants to that, that we've got to have a conversation. Peace starts somewhere. And I'm not saying that we necessarily have to go and then, because here's the tough part, when we make that decision and and if we do do it and when we do do it. You know, uh, I don't know that we have three people here that want to keep that line item at six hundred thousand there. And if we, but if we immediately shift it from the school to the schools, it's almost like we're robbing Peter to pay Paul. But I think people have to understand that we we, and I think they do understand that we have to look at this holistically. Um, and it's it's not easy decisions to make and just because we. Cut it from here doesn't mean we always have to put it there. You know, so.
So last week I brought up.
Not cut, by the way, reduce the increase.
I was leaving you alone, brother.
Oh, no, you could have got me there. You could have got me there.
Last week I brought up the whole. Land being at zero percent, much of it, commercial building and so on. And and in fact. It is true that that if if you categorize. How uh property has been taxed or assessed through all this. The bulk of the increase has been where there's a home. On land and not a hundred acres, but on a on a smaller piece. The mass. So so when we get a number in the twenties. That's putting all those five buckets into one. So land is skewing that number. When we say we're at a. But what is the, what what's the average percentage that we've been saying?
Three.
It was twenty, well, I think we've been saying twenty-four. I mean, from the equalized tax rate, it worked out to like twenty-two and a half percent. But, you know, call it twenty-three, twenty-four percent.
I think we've been saying twenty-five.
Well, I think twenty-five.
Make it an easy number.
So but that that's that back to the impact this is having. On homeowners, meaning people who live on a couple acres or less. Um, that twenty-four is skewed by all of these zeros on land. Um, I mean, I, my, my properties have been from, I think, from like zero to two percent. You know, it's just roll in. That changes that number. The reality is, is that the average homeowner. Is somewhere in, I'd say, the low thirties.
My.
So if it's in the low thirties. Plenty of people are gonna see a tax increase, however small. If we did sixty-eight point nine.
But my, I I my understanding. Chris was that it was only improved lots.
What's that? I have thirty acres in Fort Union and nothing's on it, zero percent.
Right, but what?
I have a lake of uh forty-three, three acres of the lake. And it went up forty-eight percent.
Yeah.
What he's saying though is, but what he's, I think what Chris, you're, you're, you're right and and uh what and what he's saying is, I think what you're saying is. Proving his point, I just want to make sure I'm understanding you correctly. So basically, what he's saying is, you're zero. Through that that with no improvements on it, no house.
Yep.
When you're averaging in all of the 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 taxes, right, that zero and all of the other, like my unimproved lot right now, is pulling down. The average increase for all of the homes that do have lots. My understanding was that, and and I've. Tried to pick on clarification for this several times and thought that I had it, was that the increase, when it's calculated, is that the average increase is only on lots that are improved. That meaning that have homes on them.
No. No, that twenty-four percent, I mean, because I I I talked to this, talked to this Fairchild after that whole reassessment, so. Looking at Pearson's, all their different classes of of what increase. Again, I I think we had a conversation, homes on less than twenty acres, homes on. More than twenty acres up to, I don't know, maybe it was up to fifty acres or a hundred acres and, you know, residential or multifamily. Again, when you look at a lot of the increases. Um, in those categories, the biggest increase was homes on less than twenty acres.
Right.
And then so so I think I think. If I hear what I think what Mr. Fairchild was saying is, yeah, I mean. So when you take that twenty-four percent, twenty-five percent, whatever is mid-twenty percent average. Again, granted, all the other values like improved lots and stuff like that, the value of it is not as great as like the the residential.
I guess when I say improve, I'm thinking of a house with a lot, right, that a a lot with a house. So. When we're getting that is, when we're getting that average number. Right? For example, if you've got. Three kids in your class. Two of them got an A plus, one hundred on the test, and one of them got a six, a zero. All of a sudden, your class average is what, sixty-six percent, when actually two-thirds of. Yeah, what Chris is saying is that those zero increased lots. Are bringing down, which i- it it makes that, it almost makes that in average increase in artificial numbers, I think what Chris is saying. That's lower than what it actually is, but I guess to understand whether it is artificial, you have to under, you have to know whether or not those. Unimproved, meaning houses without lots, are included in that average. Does it make sense? Does that make sense?
They are all included, yeah.
I could have sworn I, I could have sworn Mel.
I I I'm trying to remember mine. I don't have it on my. I don't have it with. Mine went up. Twenty-eight percent. Okay? But I have two acres in my house on one lot. And eleven point eight seven nine, I got it memorized to the exact on that that's in land use. Now that went up zero. But overall, the two added together.
Right.
Went up twenty-eight percent. Okay? Does that make sense? So I know they put those two together. I'm. Ninety-nine percent sure. You talk about the houses on a hundred acres. If they're on a hundred acres, they got their land in land use because they got cows or farming or something. Okay? And if they got over ten acres, they got it in land use. Some people that have seven acres have five acres in land use. If they have one of those miniature farms on it. Okay? So any, y'all got me on that?
Yeah.
So those are added together. Now that one lot of mine counts as a no-house lot because it's eleven point eight seven nine in land use. But they put it in my twenty-eight percent. They put those both.
Yeah. And your understanding is that it's all together.
I think so. I can't remember.
I wouldn't.
Well, they gave.
I have two acres and twenty-eight acres.
What?
The same, and it was no tax on both of them. I have two acres, they get taxed. They didn't have a house on it and twenty-eight acres in land use.
Yeah, but that's gonna be on one parcel.
It is.
I mean, probably overall, there's an increase. Yeah, when I said, oh, I mean, countywide. Yeah. Again, whatever you call the buckets, hundred acres plus with nothing on it, blah, blah. Yeah, but I mean, I mean, that that twenty-four, twenty-five percent average is all the different classes of of real estate. So the average. Homeowner on a smaller tract of land is getting. A higher increase in twenty-five percent. I I would guesstimate from the low thirties. And the point behind this was. If we equalize, the average homeowner is still gonna pay. If even if it's fifty bucks, whatever it is, the average homeowner is still gonna pay more before we increase taxes.
Well, right, and that's 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 kind of my, I guess, my point, you know. It's hard to sit at church or know your left and your right, say, did I raise this guy? And I just use that as an example. It could be up in Jake's, did I raise this guy or did I not? Not raise this guy. You don't know unless you know what their assessment was. And so, again, I think this is one of those years where it's very hard to.
I think sit beside him and assume you did.
I'm I've been here twelve times. I've never had to eat in one of these. I will tell you that right now. This is my twelfth time I've been blessed to be sitting here. Mr. Weaver and I would sit beside each other and talk about how difficult it was. But that's the only reason I'm going back to this and saying. We can make the rate whatever you want to make it. But we gotta cut. Or whatever your word was.
Increase as much.
Not increase as much.
And develop a plan.
Well, develop a plan. The plan would be to put a tax rate in that we would have wiggle room.
Well, I think that last week.
No, I think, I think.
No, because we are two and a half cents below what everybody asked for. What I'm talking about is, you take all these other counties, that's why they leave it at a flat rate. Because that allows them.
But that goes to what Tim was saying earlier. I I think it's a natural assumption, as as I said from experience a couple of years ago. That um what you advertise. In some people's minds doesn't include wiggle room, whatever you advertise.
Uh, you were correct. I've I've. I've served some members that if we made it a dollar fifteen. And I've had one member look at me and say, I'd make it a dollar ten tomorrow. You know, that he would do that.
Yeah.
Well, and and he would tell you that if he was sitting here. Okay? But. Anyway.
It's turning.
Huh?
Are you saying it's turning?
Oh, yeah. Well, I mean, he's he's begged us to set a rate. That we can just. Leave that. He has begged for that for a long time.
But but as soon as assessments like this happen, then they kind of, and I.
Uh huh, but nobody else does. That's why other people just, no, that also leaves them wiggle room that if the assessments go the opposite direction.
Right.
Yeah. That they don't have to raise it like we did our first year on the board. We went from fifty-four cents to eighty-one cents.
It's making the assumption that. If if we left it at eighty-four, five. That we'd fund what we wanted and the rest of it would go into the reserves for if house prices dropped. And we had a shortfall, we don't have to fire people, but it requires a certain amount of restraint on your part. In order to put that money away inside because it's so easy to say yes. And I'm a parent. My kids ask for loads of things. They didn't always get what they asked for. And this is where you've got to plan ahead and think, same thing in business. There, when I was in business, there was tons of things I would love to do. But I always made sure there was a plan. How do I get from where I'm at today? To where I want to be in the future? How do I want to see that growth? How do I manage it and make sure it's financially sustainable? And in local government, that financially sustainable is making sure. That you're not hurting the citizens and creating other problems. So, you know. A a single mom barely getting by or senior living on fixed income. They may not buy their medicines. They may not pass the hole in the roof. Now you've got other problems going on. You know, if the single mom. Skips meals or doesn't have the heat on in the house and the child gets frustrated, then acts out at school, we have problems in the school system. It's, everything's interconnected. It's so easy to boil it down and try to think everything. Stands alone on itself, but everything's interconnected somewhere or other. This is why we have to. Do this in a balanced way.
I I think with the assessments being as much they are in the values. Of properties going up to the extent that they are, it is not the most opportune time. To.
Yes.
Make some in in some increases. To your other good.
And and I mean, if you roll back the clock to two years ago, yes. We took care of the teachers really well that year, but I also had people say, you know what? You hurt me. I went way backwards that year. Yeah, so, I mean, you help one, you hurt two others. You.
It's, yeah, we had to think about really one.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I agree. And and. You you've brought this up before and Tony's probably here and he would kick me. Um. There you go. Um, I mean. Can can you? I don't know if that would be. You can't. Considering the the pressures that that we have, uh, I guess, if people are seeing this year with the assessments being as high as they are. Is there an avenue to use anything to to help pay down the tax rate a little bit and be able to afford some of the things that? Is there an avenue to use anything to to help pay down the tax rate a little bit and be able to afford some of the things that we that that we still see that we want to be able to?
You mean fund balance?
Yeah.
No. I I I think what you've heard me say was something to the effect of if. At some point, and fund balance keeps growing. Like I said one time. You know, it could be, you could take some out to lower the taxes instead of.
That's.
But your fund balance, I would say, a better use if you have excess in the fund dollars or has grown past where you're comfortable, is not give you that. One time shot of lowering taxes, use it to fund major C I P projects, really big ones.
Not a one time, a one time thing, and then one time, you know, you could argue that it becomes a precedent, but you know, I I I also think that. Assessments aren't always. This this high and this through the roof to where people are are really feeling it. Um, and we can break it down again, it's not got black, black and white, we can break it down and say, well, this person's only seeing fourteen dollars a month, but that person's only seeing this dollars a month and. Well, this person's social security, this, this person's social security, yeah, but yeah. Things are all, prices are all also going up across the board, health insurance is going up, assessments are going up, so it's just. On top of a pile for some of these people with with, it's such a high. And look, I mean, you can sit there until you're blue in the face until people grade your homes worth thirty percent more, but unless they're thinking about selling, that ain't doing them jack squat.
Yeah, but let me say, when I said that, I was talking about. Let's let's think in context from one year to the next, level fund. And I was more talking about, give a, give a year where they paid less. Not. That's kind of. Not use that to pay for parts of this year, because then you'd be doing a one time shot of cash. To pay for stuff that in the coming years would be.
That's what I I wasn't, I I may have worded it wrong, but I was kind of suggesting a a conversation starter, and if it's not the appetite, it's not the appetite of what you have suggested in the past. I wasn't quite a hundred percent sure what you suggest or how it was worded, which was kind of where I was getting at with that, was what you had been suggesting, not not like an injection, but.
So, yeah, if if I'm hearing you right, y'all are saying like, okay, let's give five hundred dollars per home.
Oh, I mean.
Is that? Again, I mean, what I was saying at the time was just that, was just that. It was, there was some sort of conversation, I don't remember it all, about what happens to fund balance. And it was in the context of, I think my comment was in the context of. Yeah, but you could use it to lower uh, the taxes for the taxpayers. In an event to truly lower, so if at the end of the budget season, you came to a number. Then you said, you know what, let's pull two million dollars and give it to the citizens, I'm just pulling out the other number.
Mister Chair. Can I get, can I get called in and and uh, asked to be able to participate in the meeting, please?
Allow Mr. O'Brien to participate. Second, motion made by Mr. Sharon, second by Mr. Goode on favor. Chair votes uh, four zero.
And then Mr. O'Brien, you just have to state your your reason and why you're having to participate.
I I had uh, some work conflicts that just didn't allow me to be here, um. Uh, I have a very substantial meeting that I had to follow up on, so I apologize for being late, and if it would be possible just to get a quick. Summary of where we are right now, just so that I'm up to date, and I I hate to uh, take people's time up for that, but sure, Mr. Dawkins. Can you give me the rundown real quickly?
I would say probably the biggest, you know, let me let me try and cover really quick, the biggest discussion right now was looking at. The sheriff's positions and looking at school funding, and I think trying to get back and forth to figure out how. About the budget's gonna get balanced, because I think the discussion was that the seven hundred and sixty thousand. In the school budget is not enough to really fund their their, a portion of the requests.
Could I ask you to just, um, I can only see a portion of the screen right now, so I see the preservation grant and the deputies. Um, but I don't see anything else under there.
The debt, the, to do all the deputy positions, it's six hundred and thirty six thousand. The social services board is forty six thousand, if I believe, and then. We have seven hundred and sixty one thousand left over for the schools if we go with the seventy five cent tax rate. Which has been brought up, that's the highest, and we probably should be below that.
And and I assume that we are not incorporating in um, uh, meals tax right now.
We are not.
Cannot.
Okay.
It has not been approved yet, we don't know if we're gonna have a meals tax.
I mean, and in regards to that discussion, here's what I would say. Is that to the degree that. And to Mr. Goode's point, to the degree that. We look at this kind of as a one time thing and where the pain point is, and I've, as you know, Mr. Sharon, I've never really advocated for using fund balance, but. Um, as we're looking at whether we would incorporate and assuming the meals tax does or. Does pass, and that would be revenue that we can do, and I understand why we're not doing that at this point in time, but. Um, it would seem that we could pencil in an amount that would come from. Some source, some other source. And that, you know, that that doesn't have to be specified as. Meals tax could be just specified as fund balance, and if we plug that in and say we put in a. Number of six hundred thousand dollars and maybe the discussion in terms of where we might end up can be um. Can be more fruitful.
The the one thing I would say is if, uh, and I'm, we're just gonna use the elephant in the room, make meals tax since that was brought up. I would say if you are going to budget meals tax into this equation. I would tie it to certain things, and if the meals tax doesn't pass, then you have to take certain things out, out of the budget.
Or or you or use it, or or use a fund balance.
Well, yeah, and remember, a- as the ordinance stands right now, fifty percent of meals tax moves to a school construction fund, and then the other fifty percent goes to.
So are we really only talking three hundred thousand?
I I don't even, well, I mean, three hundred, so the estimate was three to six hundred thousand.
So, so it could be a hundred fifty.
It could be a hundred fifty thousand. I mean, I I I am, I think it's gonna probably be more in. Realistically, probably four to five, it'll probably be in that range, I mean, just looking at some other localities and where they are, but again. You know. We just don't have the.
A lot of the localities that we looked at had a major byway with the, with. Fast food and other food towards you up there, we don't have those.
Yep.
So, I mean.
And that's why, that's why we're looking at a lower amount.
Right, to me, to me, this is, it came up two times in the last meeting, and it's come up here, the meals tax. You know, when when it was originally talked about, it seemed to be leaning more towards paying for. Uh, you know, going into an account to budget for, to prepare for building another school or something, and. Two times last meeting and then now, we're talking about how it affects our budget. And and, meaning our, I'm, I don't care who brought up, I'm, I'm talking about all of us as a group. We're we're sitting here talking about, we haven't, we haven't even voted on it yet, and we're talking about it being a part of our operations budget. And it it, not to say I told you so. But.
Might, then maybe to Mr. O'Brien's point, I guess, and uh, then maybe it's, it's not. We don't use that number for the meals tax, we use it for some other source, I mean. I, what are your thoughts on that? I mean, that.
Well, I mean, with the fact that we're sitting here talking about our operational budget. My thoughts are that it shouldn't be, not a dollar, but it should be a part of an operational budget.
No, I'm talking about. What he was saying with regarding, I'm not talking. Yes, with fund balance.
I I wouldn't, that's not something that, I mean, y'all have never done it, right, Tony?
No, we we have done it, we we've done it. Once or twice.
Did like a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand.
We have maybe used fund balance to kind of get to an end balance budget before.
When that was a red number.
Correct.
When that number was red, we've used.
We have never generally said, you know, we're gonna use X. Again, in my budget, I've used some money for fund balance for specific one time things, things that are only specific to this year and they'll go away. So again, it's not an amount that keeps on in there, but you you might as well.
If if you do that at fund balance now. You have set part of the budget for next fiscal year, because it's not gonna go away. You you've increased that either budget for next fiscal year.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about when I said we could do that with the deputies in June or January, if we said, okay, we're gonna now. Add those, whatever number position we didn't add. Then we'd be, then we'd be predetermining money for next year's budget.
Yeah.
During this year's.
And I think that gets to, I guess, a little bit to Tim's point, and probably a different way than you would want to get there, Mr. Hodge, but it, you know. To the point you made earlier and to what you were just saying, yes, it's in there, but. To the point you made earlier, you were saying, next year, we're in a different place, perhaps we have some revenues that are coming in different ways.
Yeah.
Maybe it's not a meals tax, I don't want to say say that, but but you get what I'm saying, if it is there, that is three hundred thousand, let's call it three hundred thousand revenue. Potentially be there if that passes next week. Um, and, or you have, you know. And yes, it is there, but you have the funds at that point to account for it, and that's.
Or you can make the projections, but if you don't, then in January, you know this. And you don't allocate the money, because then you're, particularly when it's in the salary piece. Then that whatever you've allocated, whatever percent, you start the next year that percent up, plus any new additional ass.
I saw that, yeah.
Yeah.
Miss, it's gonna be, and and, you know, we don't know what's. Do we think values over the next two years are gonna go up like they did now? Or do you think it's more likely they're gonna go down?
Well, if they do go down.
Here's the one thing I will say. We talked about the commissioner coming back to us and giving us great numbers. And then some of those, hold on, but some of those numbers were blown up over the last five years, not by their doing. But used car, used vehicles for four years went up. I mean, I bought a truck, and my truck, two years after I bought it, was worth seven thousand dollars more than what I paid for it. Um, I mean, now they're starting to come down, and that's why his numbers are, they're they're gonna have to come down, that's why we have to be conservative. And last year, you're right, we did not raise the taxes, but we pushed another number in our budget. Up there where we don't want to push it anymore, the liquid tax collections. You know, we added a million dollars, I think. Which was three cents. So instead of going up three cents on real estate, we were able to add three cents worth of delinquent tax collections, now when those things get caught up. And that goes away. We gotta find that three cents in our.
Kind of virtual.
Yeah. I mean, eventually, I hope that happens, but that's what I'm saying, we, you're right, we didn't raise the tax rate, but we raised something else. That, this year, we don't have the ability to do that. And that's why we have to look at this, from that standpoint, and you're right, we can make it sixty eight point nine or sixty nine cents if we want to. But that just means we have to find one point five billion dollars, we've got Mr. Doll's with nothing. And take away all the numbers we just talked about right there, at seventy five cents.
Um, is that thirty nine for the, I just noticed, is that thirty nine for the highways, gateways, that's not.
It's not included in there, because that came in, that, again, you just had the presentation, so that's, that's not in there, so if you wanted to add in there, that's an additional thirty nine thousand. Or you could consider it out of board contingency, if if it's something you wanted to do.
So, let's just to to make sure, I'm, right now, we're we're allocating in, you know. With sixty one cents at seventy five cents. We essentially have seven hundred thousand dollars for the schools, or six hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. For the deputies and um, uh, some money for uh, uh, social services, is that correct?
Correct.
And Tony, let me add, a a decent part of the conversation has been about not. Funding that whole six hundred and some for the deputies.
Yeah, I I would, I would think that it would make a lot of sense to. To do that in, you know, starting in January, given that they already have. Um, five deputy positions that they're trying to fill. I I mean, I think it's absolutely needed, and and I'll give you an example. That uh, came up not not too long ago, where. Um, there was a shooting just down the road from my house. And it took thirty minutes for uh, the sheriffs to respond, not a criticism of them, it happened at night. And um, it uh, you know, there is no longer a patrol in the evenings at the lake. Um, uh, so, you know, we do count on the sheriff's deputies to respond at that point in time, and I think that is an example that highlights. Essentially, the the challenges that are around, um, you know, the. The the number of deputies that they have and how they can respond, because three of the deputies were tied up in Troy at that point in time, so. So, yeah, I think, I think we absolutely need to fund the sheriff's office. And and I would say that, you know, with the schools at seven hundred and sixty one thousand. That sounds like we wouldn't even get the three percent pay raise from the state at that point in time, so that's, that's problematic too.
Now, the one issue with starting them in January is we're. Declaring forty thousand dollars of next year's budget. This year. Because that salary would in, would double, because we'd only be paying them half their salary. Does that make sense?
Is he saying all six in January? I I don't know what he's saying.
I mean, you could, you could stagger it if you wanted to do it, do three now and then three in January, I mean, that's. That's an option as well too, but. Um, if you're just looking at the math, I would, you know, say, if you got six hundred dollars, six hundred thousand for the deputies. And you wait until January, then you essentially have three hundred thousand dollars that's freed up, give or take, is that not correct?
No, it's a little bit more than that, be three, six, well, if you did it in January, it'd be a hundred and twenty thousand freed up.
Mister O'Brien, just one thing, just so so, just for your knowledge, so again. The the salary benefits and then all like equipment supplies, uniforms, you know. Firearms, blah, blah, it's about a hundred and twenty two thousand eight fifty five per deputy.
What's just the salary?
Eighty.
It's uh, eighty four and some change. So forty two, you'd say, if you did it in January, you'd say forty two, because the rest of it would have to still be one.
Why would you have? Why would you have to buy that's, why would you have to buy that stuff in advance of their being hired?
It doesn't matter, you're buying it in the same fiscal year.
You'd still have to buy the gear, whether you buy it in January.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay, I see what you're saying.
Here's my question for you, Mr. O'Brien, what's your number that you can remind to fund the schools?
Uh, I mean, you know, we're gonna have a, a, I think next year is gonna be very difficult, um, and I think that. You know, the case has been made that, you know. Right now, the school salaries are starting to lag behind, and. If you take in the million dollars that's necessary just for the salaries to get three percent raise. That's, you know, to me, that's a bare minimum. Uh, but the other thing that you have to consider too is that the health insurance increase is gonna be something that's gonna get passed along to the employees. Um, if we don't address some of that as well too, so, you know, one point five is, if I recall correctly. Both the health insurance and the and the three percent raise. And that essentially means that nothing else is changing in the schools, we are essentially staying exactly where we are today with. Teachers being paid in the same relative amount that the surrounding counties are gonna. Um, do for the, their their teachers there, so we're really not getting ahead, we're just treading water. But but I I understand it's a tough budget season, and we certainly don't have the money to do the full amount. Um, but uh, you know, I think, I think we really have to try to get as close to the one point five as possible, if we can. Um, and it doesn't seem like that's gonna happen.
Well, quick question, uh, Eric. Um, Mr. O'Brien, I thought about this while you're speaking, so I'm not diverting from what you were saying, um, that forty. Three thousand one twenty five for the poll books correction, I thought that was. Moved into C I P?
That's operational.
But that's not guaranteed either, is it?
When is that guaranteed?
Because she's, Miss Pace stated that um, other localities and. It may be extended and they've got support on it, and it may not be this year.
It's, it's possible, I mean, so so here's the one thing, I funded that with the fund balance, so that doesn't even affect the tax rate.
Yeah.
Because again, uh, it's 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 a one time thing, so I didn't fund that out of, out of tax rate, since, again, I didn't want it to be in.
And Mister O'Brien, I'm not trying to be difficult, and I know you probably don't have your budget book with you. But at seventy five cents at above and beyond Mr. Doll's budget. We only have one point three eight million total.
Right.
Yeah, no.
What we would cut somewhere else, if you want to put one point five to schools, we do not have that much.
So, what I suggested earlier, Tony, was um. Actually, the sheriff started it and and uh, made the suggestion of maybe doing three of the positions and then one. One beginning in January and and my thought was, so maybe starting that conversation at two and one beginning in January. Um, and and have given them the opportunity to start, to start. Um, and, and have given them the opportunity to start, to start recruiting for some of those positions, see what things look like and, and how they're doing, filling those positions. Um, including the current positions that are open, that way it does give them a little bit of breathing room. And then to your point earlier about pushing forty thousand in the next year, at that point, you're only pushing twenty thousand into the next year versus forty thousand into the next year. If we did two and then one in January.
If you do one in January, it's forty two, it'll be half the salary. It was eighty four for salary, it'll be forty two. I think you said it was eighty four with salary.
Eighty, yeah.
And so eight, eighty, forty two, forty two, two fifty.
Well, then whatever.
It will be. Forty two, two fifty.
Yeah, correct, but if we had done, say two, uh, if we'd have done two in January and two then and two now, it would have, that would have been what eighty something, right? That would have been essentially carried over into next year. What I'm saying is by doing one, yes, you're pushing off some in the next year, but not as much as you push more into that year. Does that make sense, what I'm saying? So.
The only thing I'll say is usually don't reassessment years. I hate to say it this way. We have more ability to make these decisions on non-assessment years. We got what we got. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
You know, I have. There's no equal, there's no equalized rate. Okay, I did, so just food for thought.
So.
And I think we, I was gonna say, I think we, I mean, we really do need to bake in, factor in that we may lose some pretty significant federal funding for both the schools and for um, social services. Um, you know, it's, it's hard to say and or we might need to figure out ways to find other services. I, I don't know the answer to that, but I, I just, I, I feel like we're gonna be dealing with a very difficult year next year. Um, and so keep that in mind when you're thinking about what's that tax rate gonna look like and trying to get to a sustainable tax rate.
But I, I think that statement there is feeding into a false narrative. Because even with the cuts they're making, they said the Title One and Title Four programs were gonna be moved to other um, governmental departments and that they weren't eliminating those. So I don't think you'll see a cut in the funding that comes down on that, it'll just come from a different place in the federal government.
I certainly hope you're right, but I, I, I'm, I'm less optimistic than you are.
Well, if you think they're gonna eliminate Title One, Title Four programs, then it's not, not gonna just affect the schools, it'll affect social services and other places as well.
Right, that's what I'm saying is we, we may see an impact on both of those areas.
So just now, again, we've got to start working some math down. If, if we put in what Dode is saying, two and a half, in other words, two now, half at. Let's at least see what those numbers look like, that's one and a half more than the administrator's budget.
Three, three.
And, and it's, and it's only.
Yeah, it'll be four hundred thousand.
So do you want to start?
That's what I'd say, let's put the math in and just see what. Okay, so you want to decrease, I apologize, you wanted to add two above one and a half.
One deputy above and beyond what you've already got in, one full time.
Yeah, one, one above what you had.
And then a half in January.
Okay, so let's, alright, so.
So two deputies, two forty five, seven ten.
Well, remember, one's already in mind, so all we need is, we need.
One twenty two and then.
Yeah.
I thought it was, you wanted two above what?
I'm sorry, I didn't say that right. That, what I meant was two, one that's figured in plus another one and a half.
So do, so do me a favor, just take that number and, and whatever, what was it, the one twenty two eight fifty five? And so we just need to.
I broke out the four twenty two sixteen. And two, one twenty two eight fifty five.
I would break it.
You may take it all the way out.
Before you do that, so we break it out by, by, by the salaries and the others, so to back up slightly.
And by eighty four, forty two.
Okay, so.
Put a bracket around it.
Removing three deputies is three sixty, eight five sixty five.
Yeah, so if you want to add that, that's fine.
That's for his file, right, that's for his.
That's what she said.
I had them all there, didn't I?
Right.
No, or you can, or you.
You confusing me. So, but, but did, did I hear, did I hear, I hear or just, just the two deputies total?
So one deputy in addition to yours, plus a half here.
Okay, so we need one deputy too. So, so take the eighty.
Yeah.
Sorry, I thought a lot.
Yeah, I got you, I got you.
It's gonna be right at four hundred thousand.
Forty two, two sixty one plus forty two, two sixty one.
Yeah.
It does, I think you need to remove one more. I think that's three sixty five sixty five needs to be. Cause we had five, Eric concluded, so remove.
What, okay, so that is for. That's still, you know, that, that's. Twenty one plus one twenty two plus.
Is that it?
Yes.
The one eighty nine ninety forty six, that is, that is the correction of my twenty one thousand originally and then they backed out the money, so that's. So what did it?
We had forty two, I think, we may cut some off.
Yep.
So it was a net result, what do we save?
We basically saved, uh, six, I don't know what it was originally, six thirty six and some change.
Okay.
Sixty one up top.
What's that number now?
Well, now we have five hundred and ten thousand. Yeah. So, so, so let me, let me make another prediction, um, that you could do in a fund balance. So I've got money in there for a comp study and, and I spoke to Ms. Snow about this. Again, there's an opportunity to work with other counties to do something more collaboratively. Again, the comp study would only be a one time thing. And so technically, right now, it's funded out of here, out of, out of the tax rate. But I think, I think what we could do is we could say we could fund it out of fund balance and if by chance we don't need it, then it just, it doesn't get spent. It stays. It was fifty, fifty thousand.
If that's a one time thing, I don't know why it's not from the fund balance.
I mean, we, we could, I mean, but yeah, that's, I mean, if, if we're trying to look for some additional tax rate savings and stuff like that, I think that would, and, and again, I think would make sense, cause then this way, if, if we don't end up going through, you know, if we don't, if the counties are, are willing to work together, I mean, I think we, we've had discussions, but I think that would be some savings right there.
That's a great idea.
I agree. I, I think you're better off looking at the other localities to figure out what you should be paying your county staff anyways. And the schools, so finance people, they have finance people, it should be aligned.
They're fighting one another, come up with a region.
So, and that way it gives you the flexibility to not spend it, it's not against the tax rate if you don't spend it. And.
Just stays where it is.
Yeah, so that's fine.
So let's take that out. So let's go ahead and, um, let's go ahead and add fifty, fifty thousand in here, up top, nope, nope, wrong one. Nope, I'll go all the way revenue, no. Google sales tax, just add, nope, go right below the sales tax. Don't go looking at that, you're gonna just put down comp study and then put fund balance.
Uh, Mr. Doll, is it, um, where have we received an update from the commissioner revenue or not?
Yes, we, we, we've got, yeah, I mean, I guess that was the one thing that you.
Not very good news.
Yeah, we didn't get, we have received updated numbers from the commissioner. Um, you know, we, again, we, we already received real estate, but we didn't get a whole lot of additional. We may get little drips and drabs by the time we adopt the budget, but nothing significant. And personal property did not come in anywhere near as maybe what we were anticipating. And I, I would say, you know, I had a conversation with Mr. Fairchild, you know, I think it'd be a couple of things and I think Mr. Sherman spoke about this too. I mean, again, you know, we had a couple of years where we had some pretty substantial increases in, in where vehicle values actually uh, appreciated, which is not the norm. So maybe that's more of a leveling out. And then the only other thing I can say is maybe just people were not getting as many new cars in the past year. To, for, you know, for increased values and stuff like that. So, so, yeah, I mean, what, what values we have in here right now is, is what we have. We ended up, um, adding about six, well, fifty nine thousand for additional, um, local sales tax estimate. Cause we got an updated estimate from the state, but that's, that's about it.
Okay, thank you.
So we're at five sixty right now.
Here's a question. Schools still don't know what they're getting yet, is it not exact numbers, correct?
I, I haven't had a conversation with them, but.
Haven't figured out what they're doing yet.
Well, and they also, and one thing I brought up last week, that I think we need to make sure is that if, if they are projecting a ten percent health insurance increase, it actually, it actually ends up, we get final numbers on what that is, kind of like we're provided by the county. Um, because, you know, I think there was some conversation last week and, um, about maybe they ended up being less than what was asked for. And if that was the case, potentially was overfunded, which could potentially save us some money in the long run, or even the schools some money in the long run if they come. And that's their number would have to come back below ten percent for that to happen. But, um, there is, I guess, hold out, I don't wanna say hope there, but there is the possibility. I mean, what did it save us there, eighty one thousand dollars?
Well, the one thing I'll say about that is that's how our fund balance has gotten large. People in the end have been able to return us money. Cause that's how our fund balance grows.
Yeah, I mean.
Don't spend everything, it usually comes back to us unless we decide to.
Well, I understand that, but if, but if, if, I mean, then I, I a hundred percent get what you're saying, but when we're breaking it down to just the micro level of this health insurance increase, why don't we just do nine for the county then? And then, I mean, you know what I'm saying? Instead of the six point eight, I mean, it seems like if we know for a fact that, let's call the schools a seven instead of ten, I think we'd be, I think we wouldn't just fund the ten and hope that it goes in the fund balance, you know? But.
I don't know when, you know, when they get those.
They told, he, he said it to you.
I thought they said they were gonna.
I think he said it's supposed to be here by the end of the month, but that wouldn't be here. That wouldn't be here until we got to our meeting and then we could adjust for that. I guess that.
Yeah, I mean.
If it's lower, if it's higher, they just gotta figure out where they're gonna pay for it, no?
Um, a couple of things, I mean, just so because we're trying to get to a number here, so we can add the ninety nine twelve for the, for the money we're getting from the state. I mean, unless the board wants, I mean, that's what we would get for the six percent for the six dispatchers. Um, that's, again, that can be passed through money.
Say that again.
So the state, the state six percent funding for dispatchers, um, that's for the five. The county can offset the, its existing cost unless the board wants to give a six percent increase.
Wow. That convention is, does everybody else pass that six percent on to the employee? I don't know. I guess that's where salaries and all that stuff go to.
I mean, for, for right now, I would add the, I mean, we'd add the ninety nine twelve, cause it's money we're getting.
And that goes to them, correct?
It goes, comes to the county, cause I mean, we were paying above and beyond what, what, what the comp or funds those positions for. I, I don't think we would have come out too much, but then you probably didn't have time to check or get numbers on the question I had earlier today about the spousal insurance deal.
I spoke to Ms. Snow, Doug, Doug, do you wanna comment on that? I mean, yeah, I mean.
The question is, like the schools do, if your spouse has insurance available to them at their work.
It's the working spouse rule. Um, self-funded plans do that, a lot of self-funded plans. So if, if your employer has a self-funded, has a sponsored health plan, they may not be eligible for coverage under that employer's plan. Um, looked into it, ninety nine percent of local government, don't do that, to be honest, um, we're not self-funded. Um, we aren't, the counties, the schools are. Um.
Sure. I'm curious why the self, where the self-funding fits into it, why?
They chose that, I think when we split with the school, this is what I found out anyway, they chose that route, he did not.
I mean, we're, um, why is that? Why is that relevant to whether you would use that option or not, you know? Fiscally, I mean financially, I'm trying to figure out.
It's more friendship, I mean, I, I've done that in private sector. I, I've never found it to be beneficial coming from private sector anyway.
Yeah, I mean, from the schools piece, you know, I, I, I can't speak specifically. I vaguely remember them saying, and, and again, please don't.
Cause I, I don't work for them, but.
I don't remember them saying it was a huge savings, but it certainly it's a savings, but to what degree? Yeah, I mean, I don't know what, to what degree.
I wasn't following, when you said you've never found it to be beneficial, you never found what to be beneficial?
Saving money for the, for the company.
Doing a spousal carve out.
Right, yeah. That's what that is, so the working spouse rule is, is that, if, if your plan, husband's or wife's plan offers it, then they have to take that.
And it would save money, it would save some money, but to what degree, I, I don't think, I don't think we can tell you right.
It's probably hard math to figure out.
Yeah, it probably fluctuates at all times.
Yeah. Depending on the amount.
Any other suggestions, I mean, the, the, that we have.
The other thing that you, you know, you had last week are the social services positions.
Well, do we have?
That's such a small amount.
You get three positions for forty, forty six thousand dollars first.
Um, yeah, I don't disagree, um. Fire chief position, did we wanna have a conversation about whether that's a reality in this year or not? That's a hundred thousand dollars right there and then. Man, I know it kind of comes to this, uh, it's one of my notes I had written down to talk about tonight, I just, I don't know if where we're, where we're we're ready to have a conversation about that, but it would sure stink in a year like this to have that in the budget and then that not be a priority in the hiring and, uh, not something that, um, is, is certainly it's nice to, nice to have it there, if you get there and it, it becomes a priority. I guess my question would be to you, Eric, would be, I mean, how much of a priority is it for you and you guys? I mean, I'm not the firefighter of the group, but, um, if it's not something that everybody's like, we're knocking down the door to do tomorrow in the next four months of the fiscal, the first four months of the fiscal year, and you probably could save half of that position by bumping that out to January, at least if not doing away with it all again.
I don't know if I would get rid of it all together, I think you could probably bump it out to a half year if, if, if that's what the board wanted to do.
To me, the relevance of that is a roller coaster. Meaning.
Yeah, if things are going smoothly, it's like, okay, you got another year that we weren't spending it. And there are times where there's things happening where you go, feels like we need a chief. And maybe those settle and three, four months later, you're past the, the turmoil that made you think that.
So I, I think you make a great point, what, what does that do for you budget wise? I mean, are you saying that, are you saying, are you saying that that leaves you more to leave it in or to take it out or to push it? I mean, what's the total amount for it?
I mean, it's, it's, it's a little complicated because there's multiple positions and kind of all this flex, but just go to the, go to the budget right now. Just, um, no, go, go to the, oh, yeah, well, that's. So. Well, hit, hit the line from here on twenty five, so I can actually say. A hundred and sixteen is in the budget, a hundred and sixteen thousand. A hundred and sixteen is in the budget, a hundred and sixteen thousand, and I can tell you if we, if we were to. I'm pretty mindful with some things that are going on, but. Hundred and sixteen's in the budget right now.
And if you do it a half year, I mean, that, that's absolutely something we could do. This one, you're going a bigger number next year than you, you know.
Given what you just said. Don't we, when you say that we at least need some time to, to have some conversations and that those. May or may not happen by July when this would go into effect and that, it seems to me. It only would, to me, and I'm one of Bob, to make sense to at least make that January, if not do away with it all, or. Find a way to have some set aside if a need comes up and we're in a, in a position where we need it. I mean, I, I. I don't know.
Um, we've, we've had it in mid-budget for the last three, four years.
We took it out last year.
No, no, but, but that's what I'm saying. We've done this exact same thing each year, and it depends on who you talk to.
I think it was in the budget last year.
Well, it was, it was on in the budget the year before.
What's that? It was in but unfunded.
Yes.
And we ended up saying we did, we could go with what we're doing.
I mean. I think a fire chief is going to be needed at some point.
It depends on who you talk to. Tell you that we absolutely don't need one, we can get by with what we're doing.
Think you just described the budget.
And look, I'm telling you right now, we are absolutely blessed with that young man right there. Don't look behind yourself. You all have compared to me. You got brown hair. Mr. Van.
Thoughts, Dwayne?
There are times I would agree with. Um, Mr. Fairchild about that. I would say there, there are certain avenues that the fire chief could put in place that I don't have, or we don't have that authority. For the operations of. The departments. Those are not always smooth. Or, um. Consistent, I think I heard you used. That is, that can always be worked on among ourselves. Um, so. But I think we can either die as well.
So, I'll ask you, like I asked the sheriff's office, I mean, what is the reality and, and your?
Having someone in the seat July one, I can tell you that's probably not real.
Well, that, I know, but I guess what I would say is, is, I mean. Not just in terms of recruitment and finding the right person, but also in terms of the things that you have going on and the other. Things that were, I mean, where does hiring a fire chief realistically on a scale of one to ten, if your biggest priority, your number one priority is a ten and your lowest is a one? Where is realistically hiring a fire chief live for, for you or for maybe, maybe, maybe us too? I mean, I.
I mean, so, so again, I didn't really include any major positions in my budget this year besides.
Fire chief.
Fire chief.
And I, okay. So what would, what would be for you? I mean, January?
I think Janu- I mean, I think, I think it's, and again, you know. Dwayne and I had a little conversation and, you know, there may be some difference, differing of opinions on certain aspects. You know, I think, I think the county is getting to a point where. Some standardization and some consistency is, um, is, is needed. Um, I think having, again, I'm not a fire chief, and so having someone. In that role that knows that on a day-to-day basis from multiple things, from operationally. From CIP. I, I think, I think. There's a point where the county is, is, is moving in that direction. On, on multiple fronts. I mean, I, I know, I know it's been said on multiple occasions that, you know, at some point we're gonna need paid fire. And, and again.
At least, chief, would you agree part-time? What's if needed?
I, I think we. This would be a, a good start, but the other part of that that I see would be more or less code enforcement. Our code enforcement.
Have somebody with some authority, correct?
Yeah, so, I mean, so yes.
That, that's what I would. That's what I see probably at the top of what my list would be, um, in that position, but, um. Like I said, Eric and I did conversation consistently, and I understand that, and there's. Changes that happen in all the companies and then, and we've, we've got to work with them.
So, Eric, um. If it were in there for one sixteen for the full amount, well, I mean, realistically, wouldn't you see yourself starting to? Boy, would you, I guess you'd post that July one and have, start having interviews, um.
I mean, to hire that position, you're talking, that would easily take. Probably four, four months. I mean, anytime you're hiring any type of executive position, you can bank on at least ninety days. Easily. I mean, so I would say that would take. And God, I mean.
You know, minus any, any fires that come up that, that require your immediate attention, that sounds like that would be a pretty high priority once that's in the budget for you to get out there and get, get going. So, uh. What, what am I hearing from you guys? I mean, uh, what would, I guess it's not as simple as cutting that number in half if we were to do something in January?
No, I mean, yeah, you could, yes, you could, you could, you could cut it in there.
Well, the one thing I'd, I'd say to that is. Do you think that's realistic in being able to hire the correct person? Do you think it's probably gonna be more like one-fourty?
Um, so, I don't think that amount on an annual basis is enough to hire someone. There are some other things within budgets that I need to look at.
It's also the old pay band. The new pay bands, like ninety-six and change.
Lost benefits.
Yeah, I mean, so, 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 no, do I think that, do I think that, that amounts enough on an annual basis? I don't. There are some other things in play that I'm looking at.
So for the sake of, for the sake of figuring out if we, if we decide here to move that to January, what would be the number that we put in the budget sheet?
Eighty-five.
If it was January.
Yeah.
I think you could probably put eighty-five is what I was thinking for January.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so, so just take that amount minus eighty-five or what's, or whatever.
No, no, don't minus eighty-five.
Thirty-one, yeah. I can't read.
Three, one, four, six, three.
Then you do go back to budget.
Thirty-one, you said?
Go down to the. The emergency services. Right there, just, stop right there. Line fifty-eight, just go ahead and, um, just put, um, half your, half your fire, chief of fire in the MS.
Thirty-one, four, six, three.
Yeah, it's minus. No, 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 not that, not minus eighty-five.
Thirty-one, four, six, three. Thirty-one, four, six, three.
Okay, one, one more. And just put half your chief of fire in the MS.
So that's. A net of eighty-five? Oh, okay. I thought you were saying, so it went from one sixteen to what?
Thirty-one, four.
It went from one sixteen to eighty-five.
Okay. So that took us from what to what? Where were we at before that?
We're at like, uh, five.
Four, seven, two.
Five seventy, now we're at six oh two is what we have. Are you talking like, like the whole?
No, no, I was figuring out what that added to that number there. I guess I could just subtract. I felt like we were lower.
I mean, we had one sixteen in there and then.
So eighty-five is what you kept in the budget for a half?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Because the one sixteen was not, it's pre, it was pre the updated rates and plus there is a little.
You feel good about that number?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, um, any other areas anyone can talk about? I've kind of been through that one out there for a while.
Put that through the attachment.
What would that do to the doctrine?
One and a third cent, and that's leaving the schools at six, seven, sixty-one.
Correct.
I would, I would put. Three hundred thousand towards schools.
That, remember, that means that the, the, the schools, all the teachers have to eat the increase of the health insurance.
Well, I'd put all of it there, but I don't think anybody, we hear anybody else say yes.
Just, just passing that on, that's, that's.
See, I would like to see where we are with them at, at, at the one million for the, for at least a three percent increase, just to. If we were to end right now, which I'm not saying we are, but if we were to end right now, that'd be a good, I think, anybody. I guess, I guess just to see where we are, so.
Seventy-four, seventy-four and a quarter is where you are right now, basically.
Yeah, well, what I'm saying.
If you put three hundred in for this, if you put another three hundred in for this. If you get to the million dollars, you need to get to the million dollars just to cover the.
One, one seventy-two, eight thirty.
So three hundred thousand puts you pretty close to it.
Yeah, three hundred and five thousand or three hundred and ten thousand, eleven thousand.
So go in, just go in there and add three eleven.
One million seventy-two, eight thirty.
What is that number, Mike? Oh, yeah, I got you.
Do we wanna make it?
Was it eight thirty?
It was eight thirty. Just being a little, you know.
A hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Yeah, a hundred and ninety-one dollars right there. No, well, just.
Just go add it to three eleven, so it's consistent.
Three eleven, one nine one.
No, well, yeah, one nine one, there you go.
Your ninety-one will be about six tenths of a cent. I'll put you seven, like you said, seventy-four. I don't think we're gonna be here that much longer.
I say we wait and see what happens next week.
I mean, it's a way to see, we could, the commissioner could come back with new housing. And get, uh, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, something of that nature.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Mr. Spencer said, what about?
My e-bike. And then the seniors, that's for another day for the seniors. I mean, if you don't put it on there, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure you remember.
So, I guess, and I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be, um. Unpopular necessarily, but, uh, if we're asking. If, if we're asking the teachers, uh, and the schools to, uh, absorb all the health insurance increase. Why wouldn't we do the same thing to the staff?
We did it to the staff last year.
I don't think we gave them, I think we, I don't think that's what we did.
No, the staff got nothing.
Yeah, they got eight percent.
Yeah, I mean. They, no, we're not talking pay rise, we're talking healthcare.
It was eight out of eleven. Yeah, I mean, we didn't, so yes, there was an increase to staff. No, I mean, that's, I'm just perfectly. The staff didn't need all the increase, but the staff covered a portion, and I don't remember, I could probably go back and figure out what that amount was, but. Yes, staff did.
Eight, ten out of eleven, then you're, you're covering basically like eighty percent of it or something like that.
Yeah. Tell you, if I remember right from the beginning of the conversation, thirty-one, one percent is equal to thirty-one thousand.
Yes.
And then you gotta remember the year before too, that a lot of the staff were disgruntled because the schools got. A monumental salary increase and the county staff did not. Previously, when something would come through where we'd give the staff, county staff an increase or a bonus. The schools almost always came back and said, what about us? And we ended up giving it to them. And it tends to work in one direction, but not the other.
I feel like we've tried to be fair there, and I guess Mr. Dollar would be useful and instructive. To, um, to, to kind of get a history of that as well, too.
Uh, on the insurance for what we did for.
This, this, the, the, the differences in adjustments between schools and staff. Over the, say, the last five years or something like that.
In salaries?
For, for salaries or insurance?
Both.
I would say do both.
Okay, the big jump that we got was because we had two different pay scales. We've never had two different pay scales, I don't believe, for the county.
That was in the twenty eighteen.
That was when we gave the big increase, was to get rid of the two differing pay scales for teachers.
But that was in twenty twenty-three.
That was when we gave the two million dollars, trust me, one of us. And lived through that. So the older teachers didn't get as much. Some younger teachers got way more than I got. Okay, now I'm not arguing about what I get. Okay, I'm very pleased I make what I make now, but. If I moved to another county, it'd be six thousand dollars more. Okay? I will just tell you this much, I'm trying to go back to my point. You talk about insurances. Here's the major difference. Bring up the family plan, please. And I'm not trying to go apples and oranges here, but that's what we're dealing with, guys. Apples and oranges. Our family pay plan, the most expensive plan we had, how much does the employee pay?
Right there. Um, so the most, the richest plan is the K A five hundred comprehensive. So the total premium is twenty-four forty.
But how much does the employee pay?
Six thirty-six.
Six thirty-six, they're three hundred dollars more, they're thirty-three percent more than that. They're over nine hundred dollars, I believe. For their, for their.
Does anyone have their, the schools, I, I don't know.
It's right here. I'm not sure. I'm pretty sure, we talked about, if we made them eat any of the health insurance premiums, it would be over a thousand this year for a family plan, for a. Teacher who's got his wife and kids on their wedding. And that's the biggest difference. I'm not, and, and I'm, guys, I'm not trying to throw the county under the bus, but that's, that's one of the huge things. Yeah, we have given pay raises to the teachers, but that's major pay raise was because we had an A scale and a B scale. That got through the A and B and put everybody on the same page there.
That's right.
Okay, the, but the insurance is not, not even close in what is paid. And we have a better plan.
This, the alert badges, are those a one-time thing or is that a?
I think that that might end up being something that has a continuing cost with it.
The, so, the service, but the badges themselves or the one time or setup, there's gotta be.
I think they purchased the badges with the, um, carryover.
Okay.
But it was almost a wash because they took something else.
The other service, yeah.
I think that, uh, but I think that does come a cost to that, if I remember correctly. I don't know anything about what it is, I can't tell you that.
Is there any appetite for potentially looking at nonprofits?
I'm sorry, can you say it again, please?
Yeah, the type of potentially looking at nonprofits.
What's the total in nonprofits?
I, I would like to see last year's total versus this year's.
Um, go to nonprofit agencies, no link, nope, go on.
Six fifty-seven.
So in the budget for, so in the current, in the current fiscal year is six thirty-one. In my proposed budget was six fifty-seven, so about a twenty-six thousand dollar increase.
Personally. Over the next week, I wanna spend more time with these. I, I think there, there's definitely room within. How much room? How much do we spend total in it? Six? Okay, six fifty-seven. Big portion, that's gonna be John, I think John's like.
John's eighty.
Or eighty. Yeah, it's one twenty is what they were asking for.
Yeah, John's eighty.
John. Uh, yeah.
Eighty zero four seven. They, they went down.
Okay, there we go, what's the biggest ones in there, I mean, that's where you go.
Java.
Are we all the way to top?
I thought we reduced Java because we moved money to Parks and Rec.
We did, we moved about eleven thousandish dollars, maybe a little bit more. Ten thousand dollars to Parks and Rec last year.
Phone a friend. Uh, sorry, I'm trying to see the biggest increase, um.
I, I, I mean, there's a. I think the percentage is a misnomer, so if, if you're getting a thousand and we give you fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
Wow, you got fifty percent. There's no savings, so, no, look at the big line item, so.
That's what I'm saying.
Uh, T J P D C, we can't touch any of the bottom stuff because we have to do it, so it's up above, the ones that are eighty and sixty.
Above, it's, it's mostly gonna be, um, you know, it's there, it's mostly M A C A, John, Java. Um, what's one thirty-one? You can touch it, you're just gonna, you're just gonna lose services.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, we're not gonna find a ton of savings there, that's for sure.
Yeah. They save us a lot more than they cost us.
I think so, I agree with that. I mean, I think we'll, we'll know more next week, um, we, we have some updates that will come in. Um, you know, we've got five hundred thousand there. You know, we have the option of what happens with meals tax or doesn't happen with meals tax. Um, we might get some other numbers, you know, maybe some definition from the schools in terms of what the health insurance cost is. Um, you know, so we've, we've got some wiggle room, but, you know, certainly urge the board to keep in mind that, you know, we, we, we. We don't want to go backwards, um, so.
It excludes, are, are we done on this sheet? The only thing I'd say in wrapping up that sheet is, I, I do agree that some save more than they cost while, as far as to the county. On the tax rate, some do not save, um, on the tax rate. Some are spend that doesn't necessarily save county from money that we otherwise were spending.
I'm not saying you shouldn't review it, I'm just saying, in, in the big scheme of things, you'd be lucky to cut two tenths of a cent off.
So, but yeah, but think, think of Tony, you mentioned health insurance for the employees, well, at six percent. It's thirty-one grand one per percent, so you mentioned that that is an option. And that would be less than the um nonprofits.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're saying there.
Well, thirty-one, it's thirty-one times six. So Tony, you asked about cutting. Uh, how much we pay to the health insurance increase.
Mm-hmm.
But, but you're talking a hundred and some thousand there. Um, it's six hundred and some thousand that you'd be, that is the total nut on nonprofits, so I would. Me, as you're saying, if it's only a hundred and some thousand. That's, that you could get out of the nonprofits, you're still. It's not that small of a number because you're talking about a hundred and some thousand if we didn't pay for the increase in.
Oh, I, I, I mean, I, I, certainly if you wanted to cut a hundred thousand off of nonprofits, it would be a big step backwards for a lot of them and. Um, you know, I think that, that uh, you know, we did that twelve years ago and took a long time to get them kind of back up, but. You know, it, it, I'm just saying, for the most part, you look at the nonprofits, they're all gonna. I think you made the statement saying that there are some that maybe don't provide what you think they're doing and, you know, that's a subject for debate. I'm just stating in the big picture of things right now, I'd be surprised if we found fifty thousand dollars from nonprofits that we ultimately cut. And that's not necessarily going to change the budget, you know, the, the tax rate significantly, that's all I'm saying.
This, this for clarity, you said, you thought I said what?
Uh, I don't know, I, I didn't understand your thirty-one times six, I'm not really sure what you said.
For, for each, each one percent of the increase in county health, county health insurance represents thirty-one thousand.
Okay, I understand.
They're saying if you got rid of the whole increase out of the budget, you're at a hundred and some thousand.
For the, oh, for the, for the. For the health insurance for the employees, I'm deciding that as a, you know, okay, you know. In, in terms of what we have traditionally tried to do, and this is why I asked Mr. Doll to give us, you know, that comparison. You know, Mr. Hodge said, you know, it, it, it seems like we haven't tried to do it, but I know, and I think Mr. Sheridan can back me up on this, that. We have generally tried to be very cognizant of trying to keep both agencies on par. Um, and so, you know, maybe it's gotten out of whack here, maybe not, I don't know, I'm just pointing out that. If we, you know, if we are at one million dollars for the schools. Um, who, who knows what they're gonna do, that we, we, we have to talk to our school board representatives to get some sense of it. Um, but uh, you know, one point five is essentially a stay exactly where you are today. And you're exactly in the same position where you were uh at the end of the year in terms of competing with the surrounding counties. Um, that's, that's, that's all I'm saying, I'm, you know, can't, I can't, I don't, I don't have a, a crystal ball to say that all the counties are gonna take advantage of the three percent. Uh, pay increase, but I would suspect that ninety percent of them will, so, um, so, so that's, that's all.
So where, where are we now? What, what's our, what's the tax rate? So, you know, we're still at seventy-five cents, I mean, because we have a change of actual, but we've got excess revenue of two hundred and ninety-one thousand. What'd you say?
Seventy-four four. Be my guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, right in that neighborhood.
Yeah. Gotcha. Yep, it's four, forty-six thousand per. The only thing we have to do, so we added two deputies above and beyond what I have.
One half, yeah.
Well, but.
By the end of the year.
By the end of the year, we need, we need two cars.
Yeah.
So, so go to the C I P, please, or actually just go down here to the C I P. I went up, oh, because we, I, I need the amount per car, I'm sorry. Go down, that was like eighty something, I feel like.
Oh, because these don't have all the equipment.
Eighty-three-three, so we need to add uh. One sixty-six. Six.
Yeah.
So let's go, go back to the budget sheet. Yeah, balance sheet, go down to the C I P. And add two, just put two shares vehicles. And then go up top and add one sixty-six for, and just put C I P fund balance. No.
Right here.
Yeah.
Go one, one up.
Yeah. Just put. C I P fund balance and for one sixty-six six. So that's, that's taking care of that, um, is there anything else that you all want to look at? I mean, so, so what I'm trying to get to is, I mean, so next week. Um, so we have to set, set a budget and the tax rate associated with that budget at seven o'clock meeting. So we have a. Yeah, a five o'clock work session, so we're literally only gonna have forty-five minutes before we have to come to. Cause this has to be balanced down to zero, so that's where, if we know kind of where you're heading, I mean. Are, are we saying we want to take that two ninety-one and lower the tax rate, is there something else we want to do? Cause I'd rather, I'd rather make some changes now and, and kind of get things situated for like.
Here would be my suggestion, okay, seventy-five is the max.
Yep.
And that's all that's staying is the max, if we take the two ninety-one and put it at the schools. I guarantee you that's plenty of money for them to cover a hole of harmless and do the pay raise. And then if we find out their insurance is cheaper, then we can start pulling back. And that would be my one suggestion, rather than just saying we're gonna make it a seventy-four four tax rate right now and.
When you say start pulling back what?
If they get more funding from the state. That is definitely the crystal ball, and I'm not trying to be a smart aleck. That's why we were told so much that one year is because they didn't tell us until September, oh, by the way, our budget's done in April.
I mean, I, I guess to go to Mr. Sheridan's point, I mean, let, let's just say that you decided to do that. That, that, that's the high water mark, I mean.
It can't go any higher.
You can't go any higher than that, correct?
Or so, what you said, if they get, if, if it's not that high, you, you said we can pull it back, you mean? When you were talking about the insurance, if we want it, I mean, it, that's the, our will.
I thought. See what the raw number is, if we can get that and then make a decision later based on whether.
But, but I'm saying we have to leave room, because we don't know what the wrong number is. So if we allocate money to the schools and the state doesn't come up with it until June or August.
School are gonna have to figure out a way to, to work with them.
So when the money comes through, do we have to pass it through to them?
If they get money.
Yeah, from the state.
If they got. By the time we adopted the budget, let's just say that their state figure changed by some, something dramatic. They would have to have supplemental, supplemental appropriation going before the board, and so the board would have over, would have uh. Um, oversight to see whatever that was, and so if it was related. If it was related to some type of new funding for, let's just say, because they.
Let's just say that here, because they're saying we have to have, we're gonna cover the, our portion of the other eighty aides that we weren't covering.
Yeah.
And that would be something ridiculous, like a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars for eighty positions. So we could hold on to that rather than pass it through.
Well, yes, or what you would do is you would maybe pass on the state piece and maybe reduce what.
Okay, and you can do that, I mean, okay.
So what are you suggesting?
Uh, my suggestion is we take what's there, put it to the school budget. And if next week, we come in here and three decide that they want to say, we're doing a seventy-three cent tax rate, then we gotta start. Taking stuff away, not cutting stuff, but just. We set the max rate. We don't set the tax rate, we set the max rate.
You set the budget and, 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 and whatever those rates are, the maximum rates associated with that.
I thought we did that the last meeting.
No, the last meeting, it's a twofold, you said the max rate at the last meeting associated with the equalized tax rate.
Okay.
This one, you're setting the budget and there is a bunch of tax rates associated with that budget, so again, you cannot, cannot go above that.
So we have the extra one because it's an equalization.
Yeah, because again, this is include, you know, personal property, machinery, tools, everything, so whatever rates you set, that's, that's it. Now, and to what Mike said, just saying either's an option, as you said, if we do the two ninety-one, the schools. Then three people could come in here next time and decide where you're gonna cut, on the flip side. If you didn't do the two ninety-one, the schools, three people come in and decide what they're gonna give.
That's the same argument as two weeks ago, yeah.
Well, I mean.
Not argument, but.
Well.
The difference in looking at.
The way you look at it.
Heather described it great in her article in the review, she said it's just kind of a philosophical, philosophical difference on how you approach the budgeting, budgeting process, and I think it boils down to that. Um.
And so, and, 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 and just for us, and I'll say just for us, I don't want to say selfishly, but a lot of all these ads and everything. Like on the big budget sheet and the different categories that they go in. Cause we don't have a whole lot of time next week, so finance is gonna need to get these in kind of the appropriate places, so let's just say next week. You've got a few little tweaks and stuff you want to make, well, a few little tweaks are a lot easier to make than, than having to kind of.
Hold it.
Yeah.
And, and Chris, I, I, I know, can, understand completely, but it, it has to be a part of the conversation a little bit, and I understand where you're coming from earlier, talking about it. Um, but, you know, are we gonna have to set that rate before we actually take a vote on the meals tax? And know whether or not we're gonna have the meals tax?
You could, I mean, I could, so right now, right now, the way it is, is, is the, the budget adoption is under action. So we got a few presentations, a few action items, then you go into public hearings, meals taxes and public hearing.
You could, you, you could say, you, you, you don't want to uh take action on the budget until after the public hearings.
Yeah.
I would probably make that motion, I would want to know everything that's involved.
The only quite thing I say about meals taxes, we don't.
No.
We have estimated, we have educated guesses. That's a moving target, and you want to make sure you, you would educate guests low. On, on me, I would, I mean, if, if you, if, if you did include meals tax anywhere in this first year, I would make sure it was. Very, very conservative. And, and if you. Like seventy-four point one, we say, setting seventy-four four. Yeah, so, I mean, in reality, if you're gonna use it towards operations. It, it goes to what I've been saying since this conversation came up. You're really increasing taxes more than seventy-four point whatever.
Yeah.
Cause you're introducing a new tax on top of that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's, it's, it's just increasing taxes in a different way.
Well, as we've seen also, we, yeah, it, it's another tool that we have and, you know, the burden is. Shared differently than the burden of just passing the entire cost to the homeowner. So, yes, it is a tax, but we're also looking at a budget that, you know, is pretty much a flat budget. Um, and hanging on to meet the needs of the county. Um, without getting ahead, without doing anything that's gonna get us a little further ahead, so, you know, we have to be realistic about. The fact that, you know, we're sitting here and arguing about, you know, whether it should be seventy-four, seventy-five, et cetera. The net difference is relatively small when you look at it from the homeowner's perspective. Because they're still gonna absorb the majority of the assessment increase to begin with, and I, I understand that, and I understand it's painful. But I also understand that, you know, we compete against other counties, um, so, you know, i- it's. It, it is ultimately a lever that a lot of surrounding counties have, and uh we will see. People that don't live in the county paying for some of our taxes, which is a net positive, I think, in the long run. We didn't have, if we don't have that, and again, this is a subject for next week, if we don't have that, then the burden all falls on the homeowners for the most part.
But Tony. Part of the point you've made, and you, you were just making part of it just now is that you'd support it more about diversifying. The taxes and saying, you know, generally speaking. The thought that we're gonna be wherever we're gonna be on the taxes, uh, no matter what, and it's just really getting it from different buckets. That is not what we're talking about, we, we are, um. We, we have come down on the rate, at least so far in the budget. Now we're talking about using the money to go back and increase the spend. In the budget.
I mean, they're, they're just buckets, I mean, they're, they're just buckets, right, I mean, it's which bucket are you pulling from? That's right. So.
So, but, so what are we saying we want to do right now?
I, I would, I would be in favor of, of, of having that out there, leaving it there and, and, and. Uh, seeing if we, you know. When, so we're doing the, prior commit to that, we're doing a published rate, like we're talking all the other rates next week.
Everything, every single, every other rate associated with this budget gets published and that is the best, you cannot go up from.
Is real, but we're not having a, real estate separate because it's an assessment year.
Real estate.
Will it be included in that?
No, it is included in this one too, I mean, because technically you could advertise the budget for seventy-four four, the equalized rate is. Look, we have an equalized rate seventy-five, so max, you could still have a budget. You could still advertise the budget and the rate would be seventy-four four, now that is now your new high water mark, that you can't go above.
Oh, so we, you're essentially setting two high water.
Yeah, the other one is just kind of as, as, as a public notice, completely separately, because it's a reassessment year. All the other rates are associated with the whole budget itself.
Okay.
You know, one rate that we've never talked about.
You know, one rate that we've never talked about, I mean, just food for thought. We talked about personal property taxes, vehicles getting lowered. One of these days, which those, I don't even know if you can do it, equalize the rate on the personal property rate, cause we lowered ours big time. Cause it, cause it was going so high, and we did what you were talking about. At one point.
Yeah, I think we were, and then we dropped it down to.
It's four thirty five, and now we're at two something.
No, we're at four ten.
Yeah, four, four ten. Yeah, we were four thirty five, I think.
I think we lowered it in reaction to the values going up.
Yeah, cause value. We did, cause, cause we, we tried to equalize. We were, we were at four thirty five, we lowered it down to something. What, I think it was last year, the year before, we increased it up, maybe a couple of days. Yeah, I think maybe we dropped.
Might've been last year, that it went up a little bit, because, because it was just the equalized rate.
Yeah.
Cause your values were dropping.
What are your thoughts, Tim? On how we leave this tonight?
I think it's fun. Alright, I, I mean. Is, is that something, is the rate where it sits now, where I'd be happy? Probably not. If we're talking what percentage increase, it's six point some percent. Um, seventy four four is a seven point. Five, seven point six percent increase.
Something we got a little bit more work to do.
Yep. Um. You know. I'd hate to pack it up, I mean, I'm tired, but, I mean. My target was, I would like to kept it in line with inflation three, how as well to go to four to four and a half, so fifty percent buck back. Which would have put you in the target range of seventy two or seventy three cents. So Eric's initial budget was, looked pretty good.
Yeah, I'd mind the same with schools.
They didn't include schools or five deputies or social services.
Yeah.
And I mean, if you go up a penny on that, that means you're giving four hundred and sixty thousand to the, all of that.
Yeah, alright. Uh, 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 you know, the, 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 the caveat that I would say is. You might save a penny today, but tomorrow that penny's gonna come back. Um, and you're really kind of bouncing back and forth on it. Um, you know. Charlottesville, Albemarle, though some of those folks are gonna face nine, ten, twelve percent tax increases. Um, I'm not saying that's what we wanna do, but I'm just saying it's a practical reality of the world that we're in right now. And, um, you know, there, there's, there's lots of pressures, lots of inflationary pressures and, you know, everybody's feeling it, so. You know, um, just in the same way the homeowner feels the pressure, so does a teacher, so does a sheriff, so does the social service person. You know, so, so does the staff that works for us. Um, and if they feel like they're not getting compensated, what they could get compensated somewhere else, we'll lose talent, and that's just the bottom line.
I, I don't think I agree that, generally speaking, anytime you save a dime or a penny, you're. Uh, gonna spend more. I mean, it just depends on what category and so on, like in any budget. I mean, there can always be. Places to find savings.
I'm not, not arguing against that point, I'm just simply saying that eighty five percent of our budget is basically staff. And, you know, right now, we're not, we're increasing staff by nine positions, I guess, is what we're doing. Um. Sheriff's being five, five of those positions or four of those positions. And social services being three, which is pretty small in terms of our actual costs. Um, so, you know, we're still growing as a county, you're gonna have those pressures on top of it, and. At the end of the day, all I'm saying is that you, you are competing against the surrounding counties. And to the degree that we fall behind, we then will have a compensation study that says. We're at the bottom of the list, and we're gonna have to come up with money to do something about it, and that's what's gonna happen. At some point in time, you'll lose some people because. They can literally get a job in the surrounding, in the neighboring county and. Um, you know, earn ten thousand dollars more. I mean, the sheriff's made that case. It's no different for social services, no different for the, the teachers. So, you know, we. I, I just, I, I think trying to target a rate is always a mistake. Say, here's the needs and, you know, here's what we're trying to do, and then you try to be as conservative as possible. I'm not advocating, you know, for everybody getting what they want, but I think that. When you start off with basically taking six hundred employees. And making them have to pay for the full increase of their health insurance. If the school board does that, they may say, well, we're not gonna do that. We're not gonna take the raises, we're gonna do something else with it. Um, you, you're just gonna end up falling behind in the long run, that's all.
I mean, we always talk about Charlottesville and Albemarle, but we pay more than Buckingham does. And in, in certain categories.
I don't think that's actually correct. I don't, I think, I think Buckingham pays more than we do.
No, not, not Louisiana.
I looked it up on Virginia Department of Education site, because they report the sal, the median and average salaries and entry level. So the information's out there, and we're in line with Gutsland, but we always seem to look to the west. And, and that is a good thing to say if you're wanting to increase people's salary, but you've gotta be indicative of all your neighbors. And if we increase taxes and make these people leave, and now I move somewhere out to Croze or whatever. Am I gonna drive to Savannah to work, or am I gonna now take that job in Charlottesville, cause they pay more, and I live on the other side of Charlottesville?
Do you, do you really? Do, do you really think that taxes in Croze are cheaper than they are here?
I don't know.
I gotta ask you a question.
Well, you could move to the valley, and the taxes would be cheaper.
I got a really good.
What's your salary, sir? I guess, and I guess they don't offset.
But if you lived in the valley, would you work in Flavanna, or would you work in Charles?
There are some people in our EMS that live in the valley and drive over here. Um, Mr. Doll, real quick question, and this is something I think that would be super relevant for us. I know there's somewhere, is it Car, Car, the Charlottesville area? Okay, association of realtors. What did the average appraisals go up in each county? Cause I'm sure they're going to go up in each county. And they have it, they have it by year, okay?
Yeah.
We're talking about trying to reduce our rate to where it is, like Mr. Hodge said, a seven percent increase. I will almost guarantee you that our surrounding counties had more than a seven percent increase in their housing. Okay, usually it's been in the teens, been double digits. Those people never, if they don't raise, lower their rate. We gotta make sure that we tell people, yep, our taxes went up seven percent, four percent, whatever it is. But every one of our neighbors went up twenty percent, fifteen percent, twelve percent, whatever that may be. And you are correct, Mr. Hodge, Buckingham is lower than us, Gutsland was lower than us. They made a huge adjustment last year to match our adjustment and the adjustment by Enrico. Okay?
They did.
They did. Their high upper ends, not where our upper end is, they, they did their bottom end. Louisiana is about. Uh, uh, with scale to scale, I think we're like, no, I think we're fifteen hundred dollars below them. Everywhere now, cause they wanted to make sure they were in front of us, but when you get to the upper end of the scale. We drop way behind, because they continue to give raises through year forty two. And we don't.
And if, if those counties stick to the plan and, and maintain that rate. But we'll maintain that tax rate, whether it's up or down.
Correct.
And next year, the economy starts to take a dump.
Correct.
Then we'll be on us.
Well, absolutely, and that, that, but that, but that's a point I'm making, where. And we have not been. We've not had great foresight. We, we know right now, and I hate to even bring it up. With our debt payment, debt service that comes off in twenty thirty five, Mr. Doll, twenty thirty five will be seven million dollars that. Now, by then, we're gonna have to build another school, but that's seven million dollars that comes off of our debt service. Which is, you know, you ought to do the math, it's what.
Sixteen, eighteen.
Eighteen cents on the tax rate.
So, I, I, I just did, just did a little quick research here. Um, the real estate tax rate in Albemarle County is eighty five cents, the median home price is seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That means that the average char, uh, Albemarle County resident pays six thousand, one hundred and forty eight dollars in taxes. If we came in at seventy five cents, and the median price is three hundred and fifty thousand, that's two thousand, six hundred and twenty five dollars. So that's nearly a thirty eight hundred dollar difference, I think. Just to put it in some perspective.
Well, but, but if you could put what I was talking about, Mr. O'Brien.
Thirty five hundred dollar difference.
What, what did their appraisals or assessments go up last year on average?
Uh, when I talked, when I talked to them last year, I don't know, when I talked to them at the TJ PDC this time, I think they were saying their, their average was nine percent. This year, now keep in mind, they do an assessment every single year. And nine percent is on a median home price that's already higher than ours. So, just to put that in some perspective, right?
But, but what I'm saying is, if they keep their rate the exact same, they're having a nine percent increase.
Oh, yeah, yeah, if they, if they kept their rate the same thing.
Or seven percent increase, so ours are put up a lot less.
And I actually think they're talking about raising their rate, but, um, I'd have to get that confirmed.
The county executive has budget, wants to force that increase to eighty nine point four, if you look at that.
So their, their taxes are gonna go up sixteen percent.
I get where you're going with that, but.
I'm trying, but, uh, look, if, if, if my house sits beside a bigger, much more expensive one. And my, you know, we're trying to feed our kids and so on, that's what's relevant to me. I'm, I'm not in competition with. There's a reason a lot of people in Flavanna don't live in Albemarle, because it costs more to live in Albemarle. Um.
The, the, the.
I don't think we're in competition.
Yeah, yeah, well, 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 I mean, in a sense we are, because if you can't afford to live in Albemarle, you're gonna try to come to live in a surrounding county. And that's gonna increase the pressures on the housing prices, which is what we just saw, right? So, if, 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 if there's, if, you know, the old adage of you, you, you drive till you can, you can pay, right? Your mortgage is what happens. And so, right now, seven hundred and fifty, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars is a median price. In Albemarle County. Um, that's pretty staggering, when you think that our median price is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If I'm looking at a crystal ball, I'm gonna say that we might see a ten or fifteen percent increases on taxes for each year coming up for the next couple of years. It's just what's happening in the surrounding area. So.
I was just talking to the competition part, I was trying to figure that out.
Well, I mean, I could, the competition is where are you going to live, and you know, where are you going to work, right? I mean, there's literally a school that's ten miles away for teachers to go work at in Albemarle County if they want to, right? It's not, we're not talking about great dis- distances.
Yeah, Keith Smith last, uh, not last Friday, the Friday before, the median home price on his latest numbers. Was three hundred and ninety nine thousand in Flavanna County.
Okay.
Was, and it was skewed slightly higher. He, he always pulls the numbers for. Flavanna County, including Lake Montello, and Flavanna County excluding Lake Montello, cause Lake Montello can skew the prices upwards.
Well, I think, doing what we talked about, and he said there, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I mean, there's three people who said that.
We can't go up. And just for the meeting next week, do you want me to just automatically put on the agenda the, the budget, um. Action item for the budget at the end of everything?
Yeah.
Just so I mean.
Wouldn't be a bad idea.
Yeah.
And, uh, Mr. Chair, I, I will be participating remotely next week as well, too, just providing you a notice. I'll be, uh, out of town.
In Utah?
Yes, sir.
We're done, I'll make the motion to adjourn, cause we don't have to make any other motions, correct?
Or, sorry, second, second.
Alright, motion made by Mr. Sheridan, second by Mr. Goode, on favor.
Aye.